County Council is now in session. The Honorable Brett Black will give the invocation and pledge allegiance.
I think I'll look at that agenda. If you would bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, please guide this council as we do the work for the citizens of York County. Please guide us. We'll make sure we do the right things and not have special interests influence the decisions that we make for the quality of our citizens. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is we're going to have an oath of office. And Alexandra Esposito, and I'll mutilate the last part of that, so you'll have to pronounce it for me.
Thank you.
It's a privilege to administer you. One, and even if it may be, you would gladly raise your right hand and be after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
Which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States. So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you serving.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Is Chuck and Mike here? Chuck Haynes and Mike Chanel?
Yeah.
Gentlemen, I'd tell you what, if I could get one of my fellow council members to read this while I go forward and provide the plat-
I have to read it all now. It's worth reading. It is. Is it?
Right ahead.
Hey Mike, is it Mike Chanel? Chanel? Chanel. I don't want to butcher the name.
This is the Outstanding Contribution to the Profession Award. On October 4th, 2015, the South Carolina Emergency Operations Center contacted York County requesting Emergency Management Director Chuck Haynes and Deputy Director Mike Chanel to deploy to Clarendon County to provide emergency response direction and support for the county during the devastating flooding caused by Tropical Storm Markeen. Both worked directly with the Clarendon County Council and the Administrator to set mission and resource priorities. At times, the operation grew to over 500 personnel, including specialized teams and equipment from throughout the country. On October 8th, after working 18-hour days, Mike and Chuck were demobilized to return back to York County. On that same day, Georgetown County made a request for them to return, for Director Chuck Haynes to deploy to the big dam community outside of Andrews to operate as the incident commander to protect 250 homes and hundreds of people while they were isolated due to flooding. Chuck assumed incident command on October 8th and maintained the position without relief until October 12th. While in charge of the operation, Chuck coordinated delivering public safety services through local and national assets, including numerous evacuations as well as humanitarian relief. Just before being relieved of command, Chuck delivered the 3,000th meal to the community. For their actions during the response to the South Carolina floods, the South Carolina Emergency Management Association recognized Deputy Director Mike Chanel and Director Chuck Haynes with the 2016 Outstanding Contribution to the Profession Award.
And once again to stress this, this is from the state, South Carolina Emergency Management Association. This is a state recognition, not just by the county. So Mike?
Feel free to speak.
Got something to say.
I would just like to say thank you for the recognition. We always try to do our best and give our best for our community and those around us, and we appreciate the recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Just to echo what Mike said, if we didn't have a team back home, we would never have been able to leave the county. So the folks who we work with and council supporting us, helping our neighbors, really goes a long way, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. A next appearance is Dale Dove to speak about Rock. Is Dale out in the hallway? No Dale.
Definitely the shortest speech I've ever heard.
Okay. Well, if he comes in before we're done with the public forum part, we might give him a few minutes to speak. The next part would be the public forum where you signed up to speak. There's several rezonings, and it's almost like everybody signed up for a rezoning, so if you signed up for a rezoning that's a public hearing tonight, you may want to wait until the public hearing because you're not restricted in time. So when I call your name, if you tell me which rezoning we're talking about, I can kind of guide you. But, and I'm getting that deer in headlights look by some people right now, so.
Now, you don't have to sign up for those either when we call, when we get there.
Yeah, that's correct. But the first person that signed up was Wayne Herden, so I'm assuming that's the rezoning that's a public hearing?
Not the two yet.
Okay, you want to wait till the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next person is James?
Harris.
Harris? Is that a public hearing too?
For the same person.
Same thing? Okay. Bob Taylor?
Same thing.
Same thing? Okay. Harold, and I can't re- Theodora, and I can't read the last name, it's too small.
Same thing.
So same thing? Okay. The next person is, looks like Jim Covington?
May I put the Ryan property? I have something to say, but you got a bit. I'd like to speak.
Hang on just a second. Let me make sure about, oh, you're talking about Newport?
Right.
Okay, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's, yeah, that's public hearing too. So you can just speak then. I mean, does that suit you, get more time that way?
I've got one thing that's very important that people might want to know. I don't know what.
Oh, not related to the?
Yes, related to it.
Well, you just want to say everything when you come up for that?
Thank you. My name is Jim Covington. I'm a long Newport resident, along with my dad. He was born and raised there, my grandfather, and also my great-grandfather. My great-grandfather owned this property at one time. He owned 128 acres across there. The prob- my problem right now is there are four people buried on this property, and I don't know if anybody's aware of it. I've been told that the headstones has been moved, and there's been some excavating going on in there.
Okay.
I don't know how much truth it is.
Okay.
But I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned about the traffic. I hear that there's going to be an entrance coming in on Hampton Ridge, Hampton Ridge Road, and with the, all the traffic from the DMV, the driver's license test taking, and the lumberyard just there, and also the malt yard, there's lots of traffic on that road. We don't need 110 more cars, and that's only if there's two cars per house. I'm just curious if there's going to be any traffic issues that they're going to handle before they do this, because it's going to, you know, traffic in Newport now backs up from the red light in Newport to the Walmart light, and then all up to 901 light there. It's just an absolute mess every night, and 110 more cars, it's not going to be good. The conditions that are coming with this, what are the conditions? Does anybody know?
It's limited to, the condition right now is limited to single-family residential versus it could be a concrete plant, all kind of commercial stuff.
Well, there's-
What it's on right now.
A concrete plant would probably be better than 55 homes packed in your backyard. In my, in my, that's just the way I feel about it. And there's a half an acre, we've got a private road that I have access to, Russell Wood, it runs between my property and the Ryan property. There's also a half an acre of that property on our side of the fence. What's going to happen with that? Is that going to be developed also?
Have you not talked at all to the developer?
I haven't talked to anybody tonight's person. We just found out about it last week.
Okay.
I've got kids and grandkids, believe it or not, I still got 11-year-old, and I've got grandkids to stay home, and we ride, we ride bicycles up and down that road all the time. You know, once, once the DMV gets off the road, and the lumberyard shuts down, and the malt yard shuts down, it's a pretty good road to ride on, up and back and forth to the fire department. But it looks like that's about the end if, if they're going to put 55 homes on 20 acres. Now, you know, we, we've always been told that we had to have at least one acre to put our homes in, and that's the same way that property is zoned out, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that we would whole lot rather have 20 homes there than 55 just yards from my backyard. Right now, I'm surrounded by these 20 acres the Ryans' property has. The Parrishes have 30 acres behind me, between us and where the old Par 3 course used to be, and on the other side, Callout Hollow, between us and Silver Lakes, has 25 acres. So it's kind of a little piece of heaven, and we hate to, hate to get rid of. But I was just curious, if you just do what you can? I would vote no. I want you to know I voted for a lot of you guys on this council, so do what you can.
Well, I think you only voted for one, but, okay. Next person is Mark, and I can't read your, is that?
Janine Don.
Okay, that'll work. Did you, was, public, you want to wait for that?
Yes.
Okay. And Pamela Baxter, was that also rezoning?
Yeah, I have no comment.
Okay. Gary Richard, looks like Buchanan, was that a public hearing or not a public hearing?
I'm sorry, it was 6801, wanting you forward to the rezoning.
Okay.
And, uh, and of course, if you'd like to-
You want to just wait until the public hearing, then you can come forward?
Yeah.
That's the best time to wait. You, well, that's the best time to do it. You're not limited when you have the public hearing, so you can just say what you want to say.
Actually, actually, I have an update.
Well, okay, you want to come up now? I think you want to come up now, so come on up.
It's at the right part of the meeting, too. The other part of it.
Yes. For first reading.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, sir.
We, we live on Hampton Ridge Road.
Okay.
Of course, the developing property is right behind me.
If you would, just give your name and address one more time, so Mr. Williams can-
It's 5160 Hampton Ridge Road.
Gary Richard Buchanan.
Yes, sir. We've lived there, I've lived there for 20-plus years, and the problem that I would have is if they did change the zoning, of course, the new developed houses would have city facilities, water and sewer, and we have water and sewer from the city already on the other side, and of course, it doesn't take rocket scientists to see what's possibly coming. It would be an increased burden on me trying to raise two children and having a family, and for the additional taxes regarding city consuming us. It's pretty tough to put up with, with the driver test anyway, but nevertheless, they have as much right as I do. And thinking about it from a principal right, everybody has to have a place to live, I understand that. I think the statement that was read to me was that it doesn't have a, doesn't have any, it won't have any bearing on any existing homes or properties, and that sounds good at this point. But I just don't think, it, it doesn't sound promising, you know, for us, from a financial standpoint, on being on a very fixed income. So anyway, for our survival, I hope and pray it don't go through.
So if I could clarify, because this is my district, your, your question, if I heard you correctly, was that you feel like you'll be incorporated, incorporated into the city of Rock Hill and deal with those?
Yes, sir. That is, that's my biggest fear.
And I don't think they can do that without the majority of neighbors around you agreeing to that.
Well, yes, I mean, that makes me feel good, it does.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't know that there is a huge power line running behind my home. I don't know how much clearance they need, and maybe they won't build right up on the back of my property. And if they didn't do that, that'd be a, that'd be a plus. But as the gentleman earlier spoke, I feel exactly the same way. I mean, my kids ride on that, on that road, on the bi- in bicycles, on bicycles, and it's just, you know, it's a concern. I'm, I'm not for development.
And I gotta, I gave you a lot more than the two minutes, but I got to cut you off now.
Oh, do I owe you something?
No, you're only supposed to, you're only supposed to have two minutes, that's why I wanted you to wait, but I decided to give you a break, but, you know. Kind of damn if you do, damn if you don't. Next person is Alexandra Esposito.
This morning.
Yeah. Oh, okay, so that's why she signed in? Okay, well, let's get to the public hearing.
There's nobody signed up.
Is Dale here? Oh, I'm sorry Dale, come on forward, and we'll let you talk about Rock.
May I hand these up to you?
Sir?
May I hand these to you?
Sure.
I'll just pass them up to you.
Okay. You already got mine.
And?
Can you pass them?
Yeah, I got one. That's right away.
My name is Dale Dove, and I live at 2415 Fern Cliff Road, Rock Hill, and I come here about every year around this time to tell you thank you. About 2011 or so, the county council took a chance on us to give us the use of property located at 119 East White Street, the old Kia Motors Cadillac Good Motor Company. And we were not an organization then, a brand-new thing, but the purpose for Rock is actually on this sheet right here. So this, I guess, mission triangle. And the mission triangle, this is what we do. Rock is set up to mobilize the people, anybody, but mobilize the people, the agencies, church families, organizations, even governments, to mobilize those people in York County to do two things, to help renew broken lives and help to build up the entire community. That's what we do. Where did we start? We started in a building that you all let us borrow, basically, from the county, and we have borrowed it for the last five years. You have the ability to get it back, you were going to build a public library on it, but you're not going to do that anymore, as I understand it. And so we have been using that property, and we're using it today. Since you have, since you have started, we have had over 3,300 people, new people come seeking help at Rock Central. That's where we started, with the most vulnerable people in our community, the people that were jobless or homeless, people that didn't really know where to go. We have a lot of great agencies in this county doing a lot of great things, but they didn't know how to connect with the places that were there to help them. And so that's what we did, and we helped mobilize the entire agency population in York County. We're located in Rock Hill, and ROC stands for Renew Our Community. We happen to do a lot of work in downtown Rock Hill, but it is our hope that, it is our hope, and I'm just seeing this thing slide, it's on automatic pilot, so I apologize about that, but it is our hope that we would have a Rock Central in other communities in this county. And so if there are properties that the county has, or properties that you'd like for us to look at, we need a Rock Central in every one of our major communities in this county, because it's doing a lot of great things in Rock Hill. Now, you let us do that, and this is what happens at Rock Central. We receive people, we do some feeding, we take people to the soup kitchen where they already are there, we give people clothes from time to time if they need them. We serve as a mail place. If you're homeless, where do you get your mail? That's a problem. And so we also get vans, we give rides, we have drug and alcohol help there, we give out kerosene vouchers and laundry vouchers, and we have computer access, and also bicycles. If you happen to be in downtown Rock Hill and you see some people riding bicycles and they're not wearing spandex, well, those are probably our people, okay? Because they have to work five hours in order to earn a bicycle, and you know where we get them? We get them from the county green bins, and, or wherever else we get those. And because we don't have a lot of money, but we're putting people in, on bicycles, we're putting people in vans to be able to get around. We're going to do some other things this year. I want to tell you about one in particular that I'm very proud of. This is about taking community problems and trying to organize and mobilize the people in York County to address the problem, and the one I want to talk to you about is Rock Dental. I just want you to be aware of it, and if we can, can I flip through? I've got these things right here, okay?
Michael's got his pointer right here.
This one right? Okay. All right, well, hopefully this will go the right way. So let me, let me just hit this. We, we now run Rock Emporium. In addition to Rock Central, we have Rock Emporium. Why? Because people were giving us clothes and furniture and all sorts of other stuff. This is on South Cherry Road. We say shop, donate, and do good, but we give away, we probably give away about $1,500 to $2,000 worth of items at our prices every month. People at probation and parole, they get out, they come here, they get three suits of clothes and a suitcase. We give away stuff all the time, and so that's what we want to do, to be able to help other agencies, so instead of them running their own clothes closet, we run that thing for them. We also have started Rock Works. This is one of the things that you're going to hear about more this year, but we have started a work program, we've been doing it for years, but we're much better this year. We've put 32 people into at least part-time jobs over this past year. We want to do a lot more. We want to give a certification for hospitality jobs from York County, we want to have a certification for building and grounds jobs in York County, and also for home health workers. Why? Because if you've got a problem and checkered past, and not very much education or whatever, you can get some of those jobs, and those are important jobs for us to get. I want to move into this one. I am particularly proud of this thing. I told you we were doing this, but this is something that exemplifies what Rock does. We saw, and I knew that there was a problem with dental, and I'm going to tell you about that in just a second. Well, let me just tell you what the problem is. There are 184,000 adults in York County. I'm estimating there are 38,000 adults in York County that need dental that cannot afford it. Dentists generally don't take Medicaid, and so there is a dental, it's the biggest unmet medical need on, in the United States. Let me just put it that way. And we have attempted to tackle it. We first of all, helped pull off this event, where in 26 hours, 750 community volunteers, 300 dental volunteers, 100 dental chairs treated 1,412 people. And it was a, it was a marvelous thing, but this is not the way that you dispense dental care. I'm going to-
How much in one day or two days?
This was 26 hours, it was part of three days. It was a Thursday afternoon, all day Friday, and part of the day Saturday, and it was a remarkable thing. But I'll tell you this, it was advertised for 10 days, 10 days. When I showed up there on Friday morning at 5:30 in the morning, that was the first public day it was open, there were almost 1,200 people standing in line in the dark. That tells you how severe the lack of dental care is in this community. And so what we've done, here's a, here's a slide I want you to, why does it matter? It gets people out of pain, we're doing this, helps self-confidence and jobs. I want to ask you this, which one of these people right here would you hire? Tell me. David Harmon would probably wouldn't hire any of them, but let me tell you, which one of these people would you hire? This is jobs. Dental is jobs. That's one of the reasons that we're doing this. Not only are, and let me tell you what we're doing. Phase one, to demonstrate the need, we did that with the program I just showed you right there, and I'm going to try, hopefully it'll go past this. I'm not going to show you that video. Second, we started partnering, after that, we started partnering with Piedmont Medical Center. We're also doing Chester Regional. Go figure that, because they were sending people up here. We're working with the other healthcare providers for low-income people, but we've established a dental clinic, two bays, and we're making two more. We've recruited, now we've recruited 34 of the 100 dentists in York County to serve in our network. And here is the dental clinic that we now operate. We are seeing people there every day, and let's go here. Here's what we do, we take the referrals particularly from the hospital.
That on White Street?
I beg your pardon?
That office on White Street?
No, the, the dental office is where Rock Hill Bible Fellowship Church is. It's in Rock Hill Homes or Catawba Terrace. They operate, they had a dental clinic, they weren't really utilizing it, so now we're utilizing that. We just got a digital panoramic machine to go in, and it's, it's available to any of the other, North Central or Affinity, or the Catawba Indian Nation, or York County Free Medical Clinic. We're trying to mobilize, we've got 38,000 people that need dental work, and we're about to get it, so we-
Is that donated?
I beg your, no, it's cost $10,000, it's a $60,000 machine, but we got it for 10. Good deal. But anyway, hospital has been referring people to us. Then we take those people and either refer them down to our dental clinic, or to one of the 40 dentists that will see patients in their office. We've got a need that we don't have the capacity to meet right now. You, if you've got 38,000 people, you've got 100 dentists, if all of them took, you know, 300 and something, you still, you, it's just not going to happen. So we've got a much bigger nut to crack. We also will refer them to the other, there are actually five other dental providers in the county. We will refer people to them, but we take referrals from them for their emergencies. We primarily treat emergencies. The next thing that we're doing, though, is we're, so we, we took from the emergency department, we took 700 referrals from Piedmont Medical Center. We attempted contact, we served 460 dental patients this past year. This phase three, we're going to establish, we already have, a denture team and begin those restorations. The problem is this, we've estimated that there are, that there are 7,200 people. There was a study done, let me see if, I don't know if I can get to it, but let me see. Let me see if I can stop this right here. Okay, I don't know how I'm going to stop it, but maybe that stops it. Let me ask you to look in your brochure right here, in this map. This map shows, it's one of those unfortunate statistics that South Carolina leads with. Actually, West Virginia leads. They did a study in 2012 of the adult population, not, not, well, the adult population of 18 to 64 that are missing six or more teeth. West Virginia led the nation with over 20% of its adult population missing six or more teeth. Remember, teeth mean jobs. South Carolina is in the 15% to 19% bracket of people missing six or more teeth. If you take that 19% and multiply it not by 184,000 adults, but just the 38,000 that can't get dental, that comes up with 7,222. Right now, we're doing about two dentures a week. Let's say that we double the capacity, and we do four dentures a week. It'll take us 35 years to do the dentures for the people that need teeth today. This is a much bigger problem, and those folks might as well be asked to jump across that courthouse than, than get the money to do this. We are, one of the things we're trying to figure out how to do is how to get the money for what we're calling a recourse fund. We have developed with Family Trust, a $1,000 line of credit, that people can take the line of credit and go and get their own dental work done. But we've got to have somebody to back that up. That may be something that you all might, could be able to help us. I've never asked you for anything except for that building, and I'm not asking for it today, but this is a community problem, and this means jobs for our most vulnerable people. If we don't get them jobs, we're going to be taking care of them, and we're going to be losing their effort as long as they live, or until they move. And I really don't want them to do, I mean, I don't want them to move. So I, I wanted to show you, that's the, that was the map right there. Let me see if I can get through this, and I want to get you to the last slide. We want to expand this to the community at large this June. This is going to be a big effort. We have an intake center, we have the dental clinic, but we're going to need more capacity. But I want to let you know that, and I'm not, I will, I want to tell you this one story right here, if I can get through it. Where am I? I'm going to move past this one. This, that was one of our patients. Hopefully, this will play. Maybe it won't play. Let me try one more time, maybe it'll play now. It won't play. Okay, it's a good place to stop, but you took a chance on us, and I want to tell you[1774.88] But you took a chance on us, and I want to tell you thank you. And hopefully, oh, it's loading. But anyway, I want to tell you thank you for that. I think we've been good stewards of the property that you've given us. We are seeing people at Rock Central, and we're helping to coordinate a lot of different agency effort to help people in need. We've got the closing, clothing closet with Rock Emporium. We've got the job program that we, we need a lot more help. Our people need help in learning how to work. One of the things that city has done for us, and we've been asked the county to consider, and I think you are considering it, is we need jobs that we can't hurt, that we can't mess up, so we can have job training. We're right now cleaning out right-of-ways and streams for the city, and they're paying us for it. And it helps us help people learn how to work so that they can then go out. So, if you all have some, some jobs like that, remember the CCC-type things, we're looking for those type jobs because we've got valuable people. They just don't really know how to work very well. And we've got to vet them and so that we can put them out into jobs. I wanted to tell you about this dental thing because this is making a huge difference for the people in our county, and we're going to need a lot more help in the, in the future. So, those are some of the things that your investment five years ago has helped. And I want to tell you, thank you for taking that chance on us. We are looking for property. If, I think you all are looking to sell that property there, we don't have really a whole lot of money, but we would love to be able, we've got to have a home. We've got to have a home. Right now, that roof, the roof on the building, which y'all have never paid anything for, and we're not asking you, but it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars to fix the roof. We don't own the building. We can't do that. But every time it rains, it rains inside. And so, we may want to buy that property. It's a great piece of property. It's right at the intersection of two railroad tracks. It's right at the intersection, the heart of, almost of Rock Hill, where Rock Hill started. And symbolically, it would be a great place to house an agency that is trying to help people that are struggling and trying to help this community rally together to fix broken lives and to build up the entire community. And so, that's what we, that's, that's what you've allowed us to do, and I just want to tell you thank you.
Thanks, Dale. You filled a void that was needed to be filled in this county, and you provide a great service for the citizens of York County, as your discussion has shown. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words about Rock. Rock, definitely, it sits basically in the heart of my district, and I remember meeting with Dale when he was brainstorming on the idea of using that facility and, and bringing his, his mission to fruition. You know, this is, this is not just, I mean, he's passionate today as he was when he met with me a long time ago to, to, to try to work this plan to come through. And, and I've met with some, some people throughout the community who, who utilize this rock. Like you say, I walk downtown, I see people headed that way, I see them on bicycles, I see them coming from Rock Hill Homes headed that way, so I know they're headed to the rock. And, and this is, this is a ministry, y'all. You know, if you see an opportunity to support what Rock is doing downtown or over at the Rock Emporium on Cherry Road, definitely pour into this. This is basically a ministry without, without a steeple on the top. You know, this is, this is not just the work of Dale. You have to be sent, you have to be called to have this kind of passion to reach out to this population, because the people that Rock is serving is some of the last, some of the least, and those definitely the ones being left out by, I don't want to say all of society, because Dale and his, his group do an outstanding job of recognizing the needs, of putting the individuals with the services that's located throughout, whether it's Rock Hill, Fort Mill. But this is definitely a ministry. And, and I would say if, if you, if you have any kind of faith background, definitely get involved or pour into it or sow a seed into it, because it's paying dividends. I remember the, the dental event that was held, like you say, fourteen hundred people. And, and I was just thinking, when I get a two fake or when I, I have something going on with my, I can pick up the phone and call a dentist. Or if I need to go to a doctor and get some healthcare, I can pick up the phone, but the people that's, that he is serving can't pick up the phone and make that happen within twenty-four hours, six weeks, six months. So, this is definitely a, or a, a service and a, and a, and a passion. And I, I met his brother, he works out, out at Bow Water with me. It, it spreads throughout the family, and once you see the impact that when someone gets a job, that's, that's not a handout, that's a handout. And if we're helping people get jobs, we're not just giving handouts. And I know we're, we're having some adversities here throughout the county with some of our little situations. So, I'm going to talk to our staff, and I, I've spoken with the city, and, and I know the projects you guys are working on with them, and it's definitely, it's another project that's in my area that, that the city has, has worked with you guys to, to, to give some employment opportunities to some jobs that it's basically, it's a labor-type situation. So, we definitely appreciate, appreciate that. But I can't stress enough how important it is, and definitely, we see the bikes riding around town, we see the, the foot traffic going to Rock, and, and hopefully, we won't need that facility anytime soon, but maybe we can find a way to, to give that building some attention, because if you guys weren't in that building, I can imagine what it would look like from five years to now if no one's occupying it. We all know abandoned buildings get, get spray paint on them, they start to look real bad in the community, but by you guys being there and occupying it, it's certainly helped hold the aesthetics and the cosmetics of it. Maybe something can be done about some type of assistance to help out with the roof, but don't hold me to that. But I'm definitely going to talk with staff to see what type of situations we can utilize people that come to Rock to help us out throughout the county.
Thank you. And the next time I come, have the opportunity to come speak to you, I hope it's in the next month or two months, and I will, I will bring to the meeting and park outside a, our first tiny house. A hundred and twenty square foot, twelve thousand dollars' cost tiny house that we believe will be something that our city and our, our county and the cities in, in our county should embrace, because it will help solve a problem for people that don't have very much money. And it will give them a safe, solid, energy-efficient house that they own, that they pay for, that they pay the heat and light for. And so, the challenge is, how do governments then interact with that so that it is appropriately integrated into the real estate fabric in our county? But we have people that are going to need it. But I, I was hoping that it was going to be ready today, because I would like to have brought it. But it's not ready yet. But I want you all to be some of the first people to see it. So, we're going to roll it out here and have it available for you before the meeting to be able to go in. And I think that it would spark a discussion about where do these fit? Because if they do fit in York County, then we want to start mass-producing these and putting people to work building these, and so that we will have affordable housing in York County. Again, thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Appreciate it. First public hearing is rezon, rezoning action, consider second reading and public hearing of case number sixteen oh one to rezon property from approximately twenty-four point six seven acres from UD to RD two at thirty-two or three-twenty Glendora Drive and Hampton Ridge Road in the Rock Hill community. So, other than the two people that have already spoken, does anybody here want to speak in favor of it? Yes, sir. And everybody, remember to give your name and address when you come forward.
My name is Bill Hargrove. I'm owner of Dream Builders and Developers, Inc., who's filed for this rezoning action. I have the two property owners here with me tonight. As, as you said, this is being rezoned from UD to RD two, which UD zoning up until November of this past year allowed for single-family and multifamily development, but those two were stripped from UD with the changes that were made to the zoning code in November. So, we wouldn't have had to come for this rezoning had that change not taken place back in November. So, we're coming for you tonight, asking for that. UD has a large classification of uses, which I think a lot of you are familiar with, all the way from concrete plant to junkyard to a lot of other potential uses. We're looking at doing something that would benefit the area by restricting it to single-family homes versus, versus any of those uses. To speak to the thing about annexation by the city, that wouldn't happen because this is in the county, and we'd be tying in the York County water and sewer that's readily available on the backside of the property in Newport Lake subdivision. So, all of that is already available for use. I did contact a good many of the homeowners surrounding. The road that the gentleman is speaking of that goes through the property is actually a private drive that services two properties at the back. And I have spoken to those people, the parishes and the moblies which are related to the parishes, and they have no problem with it. Actually, it would be a big improvement for them to access their property, because once the development is completed, then they'll have a paved road to access, access their property where this private drive, they're, they're having to keep that maintained. And it actually comes in on Glendora and then goes to the right and then down the back property line of the, of the Rhine property. So, so that would be resolved. And I did speak to those people. I have met with several of the other homeowners locally there and spoken to them. I did not speak to Mr. Covington, that's correct. But I did try to take a sampling of the people that are in the area and spoke to them and told them what we're looking to do. I even went farther out to Huxson Associates, who's down the street, and a lot of those down that way don't have a problem with it either. So, I, I would love to have the opportunity to readdress and answer any questions that might come forth for anybody that might speak against, but that is my comments in favor. You know, we'd ask for your approval, because I think it'll be something great for, for the Newport area.
Let me ask you the one question, the comment about graveyards? Three or four graveyards there?
No, I don't.
Will the owners be able to address that?
They might, but...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next person that wants to speak in favor. Yes, sir.
My name is Keith Range, thirty-three thirty-three Harmony Road. We're working with Mr. Hargrove on the engineering of the project. Just to note that there will be a secondary connection to the Newport Lake subdivision. There was a Stub Street plan in that subdivision in the very back of it that we'll be required to connect to. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else want to speak in favor? And I don't think I see anybody else, so anybody opposed? Yes, ma'am? Yes, you've got to come up to the mic and name and address.
Sharon Mobley, five-four-nine Russellwood Way, Rock Hill. My brother is Jim Parish that he spoke with, but he has not spoke with me at all. He hasn't spoke to my husband. We have several questions. We want to know if the pond's going to be filled in. It's neither here nor there to us. We want to know how the runoff's going to be. We want to know how we're going to be affected. I'm right beside this property. I am the most affected. There was another meeting that was done several, probably several years ago now for this True Homes deal. I was never even invited to that meeting. I was invited to that meeting by the people from Crystal Lakes, and I felt like an out, you know, just an out person then. I had no idea of the effect of what it was going to have, that now Mr. Hargrove has come in and wants to build fifty-five houses beside me, which is acceptable because of what they've done to True Homes. Now, the True Homes, I had land between me and them. I had a good buffer with my acreage, but I'm not going to have a buffer now. I want to know what the, what the, what the lines are going to look like. I'd like to see this thing. I'd like to see the planning of it. I would have liked to have known all of this before all of this even started. My neighbors hadn't contacted us. I understand that, you know, they don't live there, one of them doesn't live there. I understand her won't sell her place. I totally understand that this is an opportunity for them, maybe to, you know, get rid of some acreage that they don't need. It does affect me personally a lot, and I need to know, all right, are you saying there's county water and sewer? And I don't know anything about county water and sewer. We've never had it. The home, that True Homes group, do they have county water and sewer? Is it not any city that's giving them their water and sewer? Is there no chance of the city of Rock Hill or the city of York coming in and demanding that we become part of that? We have no desire for it. You said the majority of the homeowners would have to approve that. Well, if you've got fifty-five homes right in front of me that, you know, don't care whether they're city or county, then, you know, they become the majority. The majority that's out there right now would say, no, they do not want it. I don't, you know, I know that this planning department has already made this decision and that it's going to be done, but I do want to know what the setbacks are going to be. And this True Homes builder that came in and built, I asked him for some type of boundary. I asked him for a fence. I asked him for some type of fence, and he just kind of smirked at me as if that wasn't anything that was in his plan. He wanted to be able to look at my land. He wanted his people to be able to have a, a place to go and play in the creek, but it, they crossed half of that creek, they've become my problem. Well, like I said, I don't care. You know, I understand they got to sell their homes or they want to sell the land, and, you know, I'm, I'm kind of stuck. But who can show me what it's going to look like? Can Mr. Hargrove tonight show me what this is going to look like? Has he got the picture? Is he ready to tell me how the runoff's going to be so that it's not coming down on my property? I'm already having runoff problems from that property.
Well, just, you know, this is just one of three readings, okay? So, there's two other readings we have to go through where he can address other neighbors' concerns, including you, obviously. So...
The second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is second reading. I'm sorry. I was corrected, this is second reading. So, there's one more reading after this, where the, in between, your questions can be answered.
So, you, you can't, you don't know anything about county water and sewer? Is that what you're saying to me? You, you can't answer that?
It will be served by county water and sewer. Coming back from the Newport Lakes subdivision.
Right. I mean, was there more?
How is that served now from that Newport Lakes? How is it served?
That is served off of Highway two-seventy-four. Main lines on Highway two-seventy-four.
County as well. County as well, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so it's all going to stay county?
It's currently county, and Newport Lakes is county.
So, what is the proposal? Is the county going to continue to maintain?
County will continue to serve, yes.
Well, that's one of my concerns.
Okay.
But now, also, I have a concern about the value of my property, because the way my property stands right now, we have equestrian center. You know, nobody is going to be able, you know, nobody's going to want an equestrian center with fifty-five houses sitting in front of it and probably two or three hundred sitting on the backside. So, that's why I'm against it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Well, keep, keep it, because you already spoke, so try to keep it...
Can I speak again?
Yeah, just try to keep it short.
Well, I know for, know for a fact, I got somebody that went over to the property last week, and there's been an excavation on that property, and the headstones are gone. There was a nice headstone about this big with lettering telling every date and every person that died in nineteen, in the eighteen hundreds. And the stone is gone, the one that was still in the ground is completely gone, and there's red dirt piled up where they excavated something out there. Now, if we need to get the police to go out there and look at it or whatever, any neighbor around here that has ever run around those woods as a kid knows where those graves are, including Eva and John. They know. They know exactly what happened. I don't know if Hargrove's been in there and dug these people up or, or whether John and them have done it. You know, who knows? But it's a fresh excavation right up under the biggest oak tree in there where the headstones were.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else opposed? Anybody opposed? There being none, do we have a motion to close the public?
Motion to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no.
Move to approve.
Need a second.
With condition of single-family homes, residential.
Second.
Discussion. And, and let me say that this is my district. I've gotten several people that are very positive about it. I've not heard any negative, negatives until today. In fact, I even got an email this morning positive about it. But there'll need to be some questions answered between second reading and third reading just to get some of these concerns addressed, obviously. Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want to emphasize the consideration for the possibility of, of the graves, if Yes, I just want to emphasize the consideration for the possibility of the graves, if that would be answered.
Well, that was going to be one of the questions that have to be addressed. But, yes, ma'am.
I guess I do have a couple of questions since the folks are here. Audra, I assume it would be you that Ms. Mobley would need to come talk to, to get some details about that so she knows...
Some plats.
Some details and all that.
Right. I'm just wondering, is that right?
Yes, she can contact us.
I just want her to make sure if she's, to the extent that she has not been able to do that, that you're the contact person that she can talk to. I guess my question is, right now, how many homes without this rezoning is permitted on the property?
None.
And we're going, the proposal is 55 on the 20-acre parcel?
Already two with 2.5 acres to the acre. It'd be approximately 60.
Was this parcel required to have a traffic impact analysis?
Because we do not require site plans at rezoning, I cannot say it is required or not. It would be done at the preliminary plat stage when we see a layout and see if it meets the criteria under our ordinance.
Well, I think in some of these cases, we do require TIA's this early on, but we don't have one in this case. Is that right?
We do not have one at this point.
Okay. And we don't have a site plan or anything for folks to look at?
And speaking of the point that Christie just made, there's, the planning department did not say a need for a TIA or whatever.
We did not require a TIA at this stage per the ordinance. We're not, we don't really have that authority. In certain situations, we will require it if we see, we feel there's a significant traffic impact. If not, we will wait till the preliminary plat stage.
Well, let me just say this. In our discussions about the idea that Mr. Johnson brought up about the moratorium, and I think it's appropriate for us to start having this conversation, there were, there was consensus from the folks that we talked to, developers who were involved in that, who said that one of the things that we could do in their, in their request that a moratorium not be issued was to require TIA's on all parcels and site plans. And, you know, I think that's where, if any of the folks want to comment on that, I'd like to hear that. That was, that was one of the offers from the development community that said, you know, maybe you need to consider this council require, these site plans require TIA's to be done. And I think between, to the public, we typically defer and allow the council member whose district this development is going in because they know that district better, and that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to defer to Chairman Blackwell on this at this stage. But I think third reading, I still have some questions, especially when it concerns some of these other things that are going on and how we're going to control that. And I'm not so sure that I can support this on third reading, but I'm going to, I'm going to honor the fact that we need to let our council members who are in that district move forward and try to make some change. And I encourage you to reach out, and if there's some things that would help you to get on board with this project, to speak with Mr. Hargrove directly and try to make that happen, see if there's a way to meet together.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Roddy.
Real quick, I think when people come up and we're looking at doing a rezoning, you know, some questions have been thrown out that we don't have the answers to. And I don't want to make, I don't want people to think, we don't know what's going on, but those things are not required at this stage in the process. Those, the layout of the subdivision or the plaques and all that, that will be approved or we'll have a layout in front of us down the road once the property is rezoned or if it's rezoned. So right now, we don't have the actual, the plat to show how it's going to be cut up because it hasn't been rezoned to show that. So I don't want no one to think we're here approving things that we have no idea what's going on. It's just that portion of the process will be met a little bit down the road once it goes through the proper channels, so.
Mr. Winkler.
I was going to say, I'll support it tonight in deference to Chairman Blackwell as well, but there were some very good points brought up tonight that, as Chairman Blackwell said, need to be addressed before the third reading.
Yeah, and one of them too was maybe the consideration of a TIA because at that meeting, I was the one that said that's probably the best way to deal with this because traffic impact's been the big modulator, motivator for all this concern. So why don't we cut to the chase and just have the basis of the concern dealt with in studies and if it can support it or not support it. But, and I would say, Bill, you need to get with all these neighbors and address the concerns that I heard from the two or three that were not too happy right now. But, and I did have a fair amount more probably that are feeling really good about it, but you want everybody to feel good about it, so that we're, there's going to be some discussions between now and third reading. So that being said, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no? Next item. Consider second reading in public hearing of case number 1602, rezoned from AGC to RUD 1, 38 acres at Highway 322 and the Herndon Farm Road in Rock Hill. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Tim Heeline with Carolina Farms and Estates. My address is 1864 Walnut Ridge Road. And first of all, I'd like to go back to Dale Dove's conversation. I'm on the executive board of directors for the Dorothy Day Soup Kitchen. We work hand in hand with The Rock and what they do and the dental program and everything else he does. It's a shame we need his services, but it's a phenomenal thing that he does down there. He's very passionate about what he does. We work hand in hand on a lot of things and...
Passion's the word for Dale.
It is. Oh, he's a, he's a passionate individual, and it'd be great if some dollars somehow, some way could appear, and I want to be one of the first ones to support his small home deal if that can happen because it's a big need. The homeless in York County is, it's huge. It's, you want a humbling experience, come down to the Soup Kitchen and work with us any day, and you'll get a better appreciation for who you are and where you are and what you have and whatnot, so. Moving on. The land we're wanting to rezon is about 38 acres. What I'm proposing to do is make, I like larger lots. I'd make a maximum of 11 lots there, which would average about 3.45 acres per lot. Be a maximum, yeah, of 11 houses. I've got some tough soils to work with there in, as far as perking goes. So I don't know exactly how many smaller lots I'm going to get. I've had real good interest. I'm making three large lots out on the highway, so I'd like to do, they're going to be about 10 acres in size. I've got two of them under contract with some contingencies based on zoning and a couple other things. And the people that have shown the interest in those larger lots will probably want them brought back to Ag potentially or to, they'll be restricted to where they'll only be allowed to have one house on them. They won't be able to split them ever or put more houses on them.
Tim, would you say one more time how many units you are going to put on the 30?
Maximum, maximum 11 units. Might be less because of soil conditions. So that's going to average about 3.45 acres per unit, per house. I'm a country guy. I like making large lots, farmettes, ranchettes, and that's a lot of what I'm going to want to do out there on that property. I've done this a lot in the county. Just purchased a golf course, Old Carolina Crossings there, 100-some acres. Probably going to put a maximum of 17 houses on that land. Will be low impact to the county. It doesn't have anything to do with this piece, but that's just, I'm just telling you a little bit of what I try and do there. And the, the people so far that have put lots under contract, they're going to have nice custom homes there. The price of the lots, the smaller lots, some two-acre lots and whatnot, they're going to be priced up there to where someone's not going to be able to put an inexpensive home there. I know there's been some concern from some neighbors about small homes or value, lower value homes compared to what's in there going in, but they'll be nice homes that are going in there. No houses on slabs. There'll be crawl space. And there's some conditions that we had from the, when I met with planning. So that's about it if there's any questions.
Taking questions now?
Yeah, I mean, it's your district.
Oh, I just had some, I was just going to point out some of the conditions that I've spoken with Tim and Audra, and they've kind of set forth some pretty good parameters to be comparable to Herndon Heritage that they're going in beside. And the only question that I had was, the interest going into Herndon Heritage will be the interest used to get into?
Some of the lots because there's going to be also frontage...
On 322.
On 322.
Right.
For three lots.
Now, this is, did you have anything to do with Herndon Heritage when it was going in?
Not, no.
Okay, okay. So this is not like a phase two of Herndon Heritage?
No, sir.
Well, I'll read off, I guess, do we want to do it now or?
No, no, no. You mean conditions?
Yeah.
No, you've got to wait until the motion.
Yeah, all right.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, and I'll answer any questions neighbors have or people concerned, like to come back up and...
You might. Well, depending on how this goes, you might find you have a lot of questions to answer.
All right. And then, Mr. Cox is here, who's the representative for the school, who currently owns that land.
Okay.
Have questions for him.
Do you, I guess you're going to speak in favor, so feel free to speak.
Chairman Blackwell, members of the council, good evening.
Yeah, be sure to give your name and address.
I am Tony Cox, deputy superintendent for Rock Hill School District 3, 660 North Anderson Road in Rock Hill. Almost 20 years ago, our district purchased this property with the intention of constructing an elementary school. Recently, our board decided that the property was surplus to our long-term capital needs and sought to sell the land. In taking this step, we wanted to plan our sale such that we could ensure three things. First, that the sale would be good for the community, resulting in good use of the land by owners who will take good care of their parcels. I think you heard that just now from Mr. Heeline. Second, that the sale would be good for the district. It would not be resulting in a loss of assets held by the district overall. And third, that the sale would be good for York County, resulting in a return of developable land to the tax rolls of the county. It's for these three reasons, Rock Hill Schools respectfully requests the council vote favorably for the requested rezoning application. I just want to say thank you all so very much for your diligent and your thoughtful service to our citizens and to their future, our children. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody want to speak opposed? Well, I'll let Mr. Herndon, I'll let you speak first. I saw your hand first.
I'm Wayne Herndon, 2792 McConnell's Highway. Lived there since 1948. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to share something.
Yes, sir. Here you go. I'll just, I'll hand it out for you.
All right. What I would like to do is review the sheet with you, which gives a history of what has transpired on this property since 1998, December of 1998, in fact, there. As Mr. Cox has just said, we were approached by Dr. McDaniel, who was the superintendent of the school at that time, with the interest of buying some of this property. After considering the advantage it would be to the community, my sisters and I, because they were teachers and my mother was a teacher, thought this would be a good thing for the community, and so we agreed to sell to Dr. McDaniel. And I agreed to maintain the property, which I have done for 17 years. I will comment to that later because I think the fact that I was responsible for keeping it off keeps the developer or whoever develops it now from having to clear it up because it would have been grown up then. The contract that we agreed to gave us an option to repurchase the property if the school was never built. And as you know, after this period of time, the school was never built. The provisions that Mr. Dr. McDaniel gave to us for a reason of that, that the sewer and water would be bought to this property as soon as the bond ref, and the school would be built as soon as the bond referendum. His statement was the school was badly needed at this point then. We did not hear from anything of the district until last summer with regards to the ability to repurchase the product, the property. When we did receive something, it was for $100,000 more than they paid us for it. Needless to say, I said, that's, I can't reach that. And I said, as I say in the letter here, when you get a realistic price for it, let us know. We never heard any more from them. And it wasn't until earlier this year that Mr. Cox came to us, Mr. Heeline, and said the purchase, they were going, he was going to purchase the property for $500,000. Didn't hear any more until they came back to us there. Never did give me a second offer to purchase the property. Found out that we would have to, even though we hadn't had a second offer, that we would need to relinquish, my sisters and I would relinquish our option to repurchase the property or everything would be closed out within seven days. The lawyers told us that then. This is pretty disturbing to me since this has been part of my life for these many years now. I don't have a lot of problems with the fact that something will be built on the property eventually. I would want it to be a part of the Herndon Heritage because it's part of my life, but I understand it will not be a part of that. I have reviewed the proposals for what the plans to do with the property and the houses there, and in my estimation, they are not, do not measure up to the restrictions that we have on the property on the Herndon Heritage. And I do have a lot in Herndon Heritage, as my daughter lives there also then. So it's not until, we had been forced almost to release the property that I realized that a contract had been negotiated with Mr. Heeline and the district in December of last year. And since we had not released it, I think that property, that contract is invalid. The other thing I'd like to make, the point is that under the contract, which they have given me, that the district seems to be supporting Mr. Heeline financially because they weren't, received him any money until he sells the property. This seems to me that it was very unethical to use county tax money to support a developer then. So in conclusion, gentlemen, I feel like the district has failed to meet the educational needs of the southwestern York County by not building this elementary school. For 17 years, the taxpayers have not received any benefits from the investment that this district made. Please consider the current circumstances and deny this zoning request until the issues that I mentioned are resolved, particularly those that are on exhibit B of the contract that was negotiated in December of last year. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you folks, and any questions that I have, I'll be glad to try to address them.
Mr. Roddy.
I know you and I had spoke last week concerning the structure of the deal with the school district, and if there's some, still some concerns about you and your family not relinquishing the right to repurchase that property. relinquishing the right to repurchase that property, I don't know if that's something that we would be able to facilitate on the county level. That sounds like something that's probably going to have to be dealt with, with an attorney to work out some of that legal aspect with that part. I think what's, what we have to look at is basically the rezoning. And I know you and I have talked extensively, and I've spoken with several neighbors in that community, to try to come up with something that's going to make the residential, the homes that's going in, or possibly going in, a little more comparable to what's in Herndon right now. I know you said you wanted, you would want to see that be developed in part of the Herndon Heritage neighborhood. Maybe that's something that we can get together and work with the developer, even though some of the homes will be turned towards 322. But by them using that entrance on Herndon to get down to that property, that still could be something that we facilitate to maybe incorporate it and bring it in under the covenants of Herndon, and that would make it part of that neighborhood. And we, that would require some working with the HOA that exists, as well as trying to mesh the covenants with what's existing to what's being proposed by the developer now. So that door hasn't been closed. I would, I would, I would like to try to set up something with you and the developer, and the potential home buyers who have contracts on property already. So that's definitely still something that we could probably work out. But I think we've gotten real close to the covenants that's in Herndon right now, not equally matched, but I think we have something comparable. We'll be discussing those later on in the public hearing. But I do appreciate the call that you gave me last week, and hopefully, you guys can get this thing worked out about, are you, are they able to move forward with the deal without you guys relinquishing the right to repurchase it? I know they've, the price is probably a couple hundred thousand more than what they initially paid for it. But I would have thought if something would have been put in place to repurchase it, it probably should have stated that repurchase at the exact cost that you sold it to them would have been, that would have been something I would have thought.
Well, I would have purchased it at a reasonable price.
Above.
Above, but what, but not a hundred thousand dollars more, that's not reasonable.
So you didn't have anything-
And I wouldn't give them an opportunity at a lower price.
So you didn't have-
I don't know what the price of the properties are going to be now.
So you didn't have a clause in the original contract that said if you decide, if they decide to sell, you can purchase back at-
Yes, I do have.
At the, where you can purchase back at the price they paid?
No, not, not-
Does you have first right of refusal, or what?
I have the first right of refusal.
Right.
If you don't mind sharing publicly, what was, what was that sale price originally? If you don't-
Three hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and something dollars.
When you say you've been maintaining the land for the past seventeen years, is that like cutting gra- is it pasture land mainly?
Yeah, it's pasture land, right.
Cutting, cutting it?
I kept it cut off, and, you know, I felt like the way they treated me with the hundred thousand dollars, that wasn't much compensation for what I'd done all of the time. One other point, Brother Roddy, I'd like to make then, to you folks then, that when the developer, developed Herndon Heritage, there was a hedge row on the left side of the road, and he obtained the permission from the school district to clear that off and make a nice entrance. Now, I would hate that, hate to see that nice entrance destroyed by the purchaser now. I'd like to make that as a point.
Now, what was that again? Which, which part of the property? On the entrance?
Entrance there, on the left side of the road.
When you turn it in?
There.
Yeah.
And they have been, the homeowners association has been maintaining the left side of that entrance there.
Right.
Even though it belonged to the school district.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, very much.
Since Wayne had an integral part of this, I wanted to allow the questions, but we'll try to facilitate the meeting a little quicker now. Anybody else opposed? Yes, sir. And remember to give name and address when you speak.
My name is Jim Ferris, I live at 5171 Gatsby Circle in Herndon Heritage, and I'd like to share these-
If you would, just hand them to Michael. Kind of started a bad habit, it's my fault, but-
Yep.
That's normally the way we do it, and he pans it out.
Okay. I would like to see the developer of Mr. Heline, of the new properties, with the entrance at Herndon Heritage. I'd like to see those properties, I believe they're supposed, originally I saw that there was going to be eight properties along Herndon Farm Road. That was what originally was proposed, whether or not it remains that way, I don't know. But I would like to see those properties that join Herndon Farm Road be part of Herndon Heritage HOA. At the current, at the, right now, Herndon Heritage has a very nice entrance, one of the nicer ones. And we also have streetlights that we pay for along Herndon Farm Road, and on the site in question, there were also oak trees and some other ornamental shrubs planted to make that area look nice. Now, I don't ask that he, you know, maintain those, they may not work out with where the driveways are going to be. But the thing is, is that Herndon Heritage is a, is a nice subdivision, and at the current time, we're developing walking trails that go on the, both sides of Herndon Farm Road. On the, would be the, the right side, as you come in, behind those homes, there is approximately eighty-acre common area that runs all along all of the homes on Herndon Farm Road. And on the left side, as you come in, where the homes that are currently in Herndon Heritage, there's a common area behind there, and we're developing walking trails on both sides. Now, what I would like to see, if Mr. Heline could give us an easement, so that we can bring that walking trail up to Herndon Farm Road, so that we could connect our walking trails, and those walking trails will not only be beneficial to us in Herndon Heritage already, but they would be beneficial to the new homeowners, and also belonging to Herndon Heritage HOA will give added value to the homeowners that are coming in, because it's going to make sure that their properties are maintained. I see very few negatives of having Herndon Heritage and Mr. Heline, you know, merge together with at least those eight properties that are going to be on Herndon Farm Road. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else opposed? I'm going to work my way over, I saw a lot of hands over here. Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Taylor, I live at 5141 Gatsby Circle, and I live in Herndon Heritage. I'm actually not opposed, I just wonder, I just have concerns. When I moved in there in 2010, we moved here from Maryland, and there was thirty-two homes in there. As of this morning, I counted seventy-seven homes in there, and nine under construction at some various stage. My concern, as of many people in there, and we've touched on this numerous times in this, as part of what kind of homes are going to go in there, that they meet the standards of the homes that's already in there, if he could follow the guidelines of our HOA, or as people have, as Jim suggested, he'd join into our HOA. We would just like something concrete that we can hold somebody accountable. I know we can't do that, but if he, we can make some kind of agreement with, they build a home in there that's comparable to what's in there now. That is the concerns of everybody in that neighborhood, that we keep the property values up by the kind of a home, front load, side load garages, minimum square footage, those kind of things. So like I say, I'm not opposed to it, I just, I would just like it to, to maintain the structure and everything that's already in that, in that community. It's a very nice place to live, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, sir. I think I saw one more hand on this side, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, my name is Kerry Netherland, I live at 1727 Herndon Farm Road. I've been there about a half a year, almost a year, actually. And my concerns is this, is what's been circulated, that I've been made privy to anyway, is that, number one is, is zoning is for where they could have farm animals and stuff like that, is what I was told. And my concern is, is why not zone it like it's rural development, and that's it, you know, because that would fall in line with what our HOA out there already dictates to us, you know, that we don't have horses and chickens and cows and all that. You know, I was raised on a farm, but, you know, I bought a home and paid a lot of money so that I could have a nice home and a nice neighborhood, and I'd like to keep it that way. Mr. Roddy, you mentioned earlier about the possibility of maybe talking with the developer, and having them agree to be part of our HOA, and to me, that would solve all the problems. It really would, because my concern is, is again, what I've been made privy to says that we're talking about possibility of two thousand square foot house. Well, I've got right up the street from where they're planning to build these houses, I've got a three thousand square foot house. So that makes me question, what's that going to do to my property value? All the homes out there are required to have brick fronts, that's not mentioned. All the homes out there are required to have side load garages, again, that's not mentioned. It's mentioned that if possible, I'll put a side load garage, but, you know, if we all have to have it, then that would make our neighborhood a whole lot more uniform, and protect all of our property values. You know, my, a question too, that hasn't been, I haven't seen anything about, is setback on the house. The house is going to be sitting right on the street, and then they're not in line with the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. That's again, something that's kind of spelled out to us in our HOA, for the builders. As far as outbuildings, what's going to be allowed and what's not, again, it's in the HOA what we're supposed to do. It's not specified. Boats, trailers, stuff like that, again, you know, in HOA, it's something that we're not allowed to store, and if they're not part of our HOA, they can put anything they want to out there. And again, that's, that's right at the entrance of the subdivision, you know, so again, there goes our property value. I would question, and some of y'all might know about York Preparatory Academy, I was chairman of the board for York Preparatory Academy when we built the school. I would question the wise, wiseness, for lack of a better word, of the school, in effect financing a developer to build houses. That's what they're doing. You know, I know I never would have signed off on anything like that, I'd really question that. Mr. Heline referred to eleven lots, average of three point four or five acres. To me, that's misleading. What's been told to us, and what's out there, is three ten acre lots, and then eight acres, they're going to put eight houses on. So that's one acre lots. The houses along that side of the street right there are right at two acre lots. I know you can't make, take one acre and make two, but again, you know, you can still build a nice house comparable to what everybody else has on a one acre lot. Again, Mr. Roddy, I'd like to just reemphasize that if it's possible, that we could encourage or entice these folks to be part of the HOA, again, I think that that would solve a lot of the problems. I'm not, I'm not against development, not, not at all, but I am against anything that's going to hurt our values. And the thing about, to me, is too, is whatever Mr. Heline, at the end of the day, proposes that he's going to do, then I think it needs to be in writing-
Oh, yeah.
-to the homeowners out there, not, well, this is what I'm going to do, and I'm going to build something comparable. You know, we don't know, I mean, that subdivision already has went through a big, one big slump as far as housing, you know, back several years ago. It took off, and then it died off, and now it's growing and growing greatly, and the houses are in demand. But I would, for one, would like to see it stay that way. I want to thank y'all for your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. I think I took care of this side, saws a couple, yes, ma'am.
And as she's coming up, we do have some conditions, and some conditions that we've been working with the builder on, that I'll go over with here shortly.
Good evening, I'm Sylvia Berry, and I live at 1616 Herndon Farm Road. I also work for the school district, and I know several of you. And I'm here because in 2009, my husband and I moved out onto Herndon Farm Road, not knowing that there was supposed to be a school in front of us, just thinking that that was a lot, just like the lot beside us that we ended up purchasing, that someone had purchased and would eventually build a home on. We attended an HOA meeting. At that meeting, we were told by Mr. Hargrove, that when the community took off on Herndon Farm Road, even though the minimum was two thousand square foot, feet, the builders just took off. My home is twenty-eight, twenty-nine, plus the garage, it would be over thirty thousand, I mean, thirty thousand square foot. So we want something comparable to what we have. We definitely want that. We paid that amount for those homes, and we would love that to be what, you know, comparable to what we have. We pay for lighting, we pay our HOA dues. You know, we had no idea that these, that someone else was going to come in and decide to build different homes in the area. You know, when I moved out, I was looking, I was downtown Rock Hill, and I was looking for a place that I could live in and bring my ninety-two-year-old mother in, and that's what we've done. We like where we are, and we just want something comparable. So are we against it? We are against it unless the builder decides that he will build something comparable to what we have. Costing close to what we paid for it, and building a two thousand minimum square foot home is not going to be what we paid for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. End of the packets will be information from, it would be the names, address, and telephone numbers of just about everybody on Herndon Farm Road, who is against, unless the homes are comparable. And I say almost, because I think we missed, I missed three, and they had dogs, and I don't do dogs, alright? And there are also pictures of some of the homes, too.
And was there another person that had their hand up over here? I thought there was, but maybe not. There being none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Have a second discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, do we have a new motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with added conditions.
Read them.
These are the conditions at this time that we've agreed to, what I've worked with staff, is that the residential structure shall be stick-built, the minimum square footage for a one-story residential be a minimum of two thousand square feet, a minimum of fifty percent brick front, or stone, or hardy plank surface, with side-load garages where permitted, and that a maximum of three lots shall face Highway 322. And these, these are the conditions that we've, we have in place at this time.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Roddy.
Now, I say, I read these conditions off, and this is what we have in place right now, and we still have a ways to go, that we can still work on accommodating something with allowing the three homes that's facing 322 probably to remain separate from Herndon Heritage, but going forward, try to look to incorporate the development that's in Herndon Heritage, come in under, come in under the covenants of Herndon Heritage. I think what, one way that we can achieve this is by meeting with the HOA, and the developer, and the neighbors, to review those HOA requirements, to see if that builder can meet those requirements. And I think the difference is going to be, that they're going to be allowed to pay the, required to pay the HOA fees, and do the, the hundred percent brick front, which I drove through that neighborhood, and that seems to be one of the requirements that all the homes on Herndon do have, at least a hundred percent across the front, and you know-
That's not true.
I said-
They're not a hundred percent.
Across the front?
Across the front. No, it's maybe the homes have-
On Herndon Farm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, on the initial-
Herndon Heritage.
Yeah.
No, on Herndon Farm, yes.
Yeah, when you turn in, those homes initially coming into the subdivision- into the subdivision do have at least a brick front, stone front, or hardy plank or hard surface on the front. I think that's, that's one of the things that we're gonna need to work with the developer to, to push to get that extra 50%, because right now, he's agreed to do a minimum of 50%. That doesn't mean he would come in, or whoever would do only 50%. Same as the minimum square footage being 2,000, that doesn't mean someone would come in and do 2,000. Maybe we can increase it to what's the average on Herndon. Because I don't think we'll get there with this development if we're requiring 3,000 square foot minimums. But I, I've talked with staff, and I think they've sent me some information, and it looks like about the average on Herndon is coming in probably somewhere around 2,400, 2,500, some being 2,800, some being its lowest 2,400, 2,300. So looking at some of those features that's on Herndon right now, we're not far off with getting to making these houses absolutely feel like, look like, and be a part of Herndon. So I think going forward, we have a couple more weeks before we get to the third reading. I would like, and if we have to delay it, I would like to try to set up a meeting with the HOA and the neighbors and the developer to see if we can facilitate this, because, you know, we are, someone had to build our homes, you know, so, and I'm sure someone probably stood against our developer when it went in. And same thing goes, we wanna make sure we do it right, and I think the only way to get there is to sit down with the developers, sit down with the HOA, and work out some of these concerns in which this is one of the large tract developers. I don't think we're far off than what we think we are. I think we're right there at it. I don't think we cannot get there. If we sit down and have a reasonable conversation, and also look at what you guys have going on in your neighborhood, to see if this is something that the developer can deliver with his product as well. So having said that, I hope you guys give us, give the process a little time to, to meet, get all parties meeting. You know, I've received several phone calls, I've received several emails, I responded to them. This is just one more step to get to the conversation. Apparently, right now, the conversation hasn't been had with the developer, the HOA, to the extent of saying, let's incorporate what you're about to do into Herndon. That way, all the homes come in under the same covenant, same restrictions, because I know how I felt when someone purchased a lot in my neighborhood, built something that wasn't comparable. So I understand, you know, these are lifelong investments with a home, and I know these home values are over $300,000. This is not a cookie cutter neighborhood. So I'm, I'm on board with making sure that we do all we can to protect the neighborhood, as well as give the builder an opportunity to, to build as well. So I'll be looking to get with, with Tim and someone from the HOA, that we can set up a meeting, maybe a regular neighborhood meeting, or if we have to move forward to do something on the weekend, I can make myself available to meet, and we can sit at the table. Please don't bring any food. I eat enough at work. So let's, let's sit down, have a conversation to see what we can do to make this thing work and bring another quality product to the area, so.
Mr. Winkler.
Just want to say, as we did in the earlier one, out of deference to Councilmember Roddy, I'm gonna support this this evening, but I did want to make a couple of comments. Mr. Heeline's been before council several times in the short time I've sat up here, and he and I have not agreed on every rezoning that he's requested, but I have found Mr. Heeline to be extremely open to working with people in the area when they bring up concerns and stuff, and so I would, and he's probably done as much development in my district as anybody. And they're all, everyone that I know of that he's done in my district is very nice and, you know, good, high-quality housing, that type thing. So I would say, at this point, I'd support it, but I would like, I've got a couple of questions as far as, not to get into tonight, Mr. Heeline, but I'd love if you would contact me so I can understand how the entrance is gonna be laid out and that kind of thing. There are some concerns, though, but I do support it tonight.
Ms. Cox.
I'm gonna allow a second reading again for the same reasons previously. I appreciate the school district coming out and for being a steward of the taxpayer dollar and for working with the community, because it looks like what happened is not going to happen there. So how do we make it best, or how can, is there a way to work together to make it a better situation now that the school has made the decision not to do that? I am all for the community coming together, and if there's a way for the developer and the owner and the community to come together, that will be the way that I will be for this on third reading, but I will say this, I have strong heartburn about getting into, school districts getting into the business of sharing profits and financing the property in order for it to get there. That, that does trouble me, but if, if the community can come together, obviously, the value of the property comes with what it is owned. And if there's a way that we can control that to where all the folks are okay with that and we're protecting folks, so be it, then I wish you the best of luck to come to an agreement on that.
Mr. Williams.
They, while you're working, I just suggest two other things. One of them's one of my concerns, and one of them was, one that was brought up about the sign, making sure that it can be left or, or whatever you can work out with that. I'm sure the walking trails and that others will come into the HOA discussion. And then it probably takes care of itself, but I just want to make sure, right now, the condition says maximum of three lots fronting heritage, fronting Highway 322, and we've talked about three, 3 acre lots and 10 acre lots. Just, and I think it's been settled up, I just want to reiterate it, that we are talking about 10 acre lots, not, not, not putting three, 3 acre lots side by side on, on, on 322. I think that would take care of itself with DOT requirements, but, but it would be just as easy to put that, put that lot size in there, too.
Ms. Cox.
I just have one question that I would like answered before third reading comes up, is was the prior owner of the property allowed to repurchase the property at purchase price, at the sale price he got it for? I'm unclear on that. I'd like to understand where that went.
Net for increase.
Right.
Any other comments? There being none. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Next item. Consider second reading of public hearing of a major amendment to the Brayden Plan Development, case number 1603, acres 150, at Highway 160 in the Fort Mill community. And I'll let people move a second. Okay, anybody here want to speak in favor of this rezoning? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Sean Thule.
Yes, sir.
I'm at 622 Leanaway in Fort Mill.
Okay.
I'm here on behalf of CalAtlantic Homes, and I work for Land Design, who did the original PD zoning back in 2013. The original PD zoning that was approved over the summer of 2013 came with certain development standards for the project specifying compatible uses and densities for the project. Subsequently, the residential density, when it came through permitting, the provisions applied to that was for, from Section 155 on the tree requirements, applied a wooded condition for the project in which a certain number of trees and an aggregate caliper inches per lot was applied to the project. And due to the densities we had gotten during the zoning process, there was a conflict of how those trees would grow and mature and how they would look. And so at this time, we're coming back to get amendment for the tree requirements for the project. For instance, under the wooded condition, under the approved plans currently, lots up to 6,000 square feet would need 16 inches, caliper inches aggregate for each lot. And so typically, when you plant trees, it's two to three inches per tree, so that would mean eight trees would be planted for each lot. And there, you know, we kind of went in with very small lots, it was a higher density project. And so what we've come back, what we've come back and asked for as a concession would be that we would use the baseline for cleared land, so we didn't just kind of grab trees or say we can't provide, you know, tree coverage for the project. We used a different standard specified under the ordinance, and we've also committed to street trees for the entire residential portion of the neighborhood. We've worked with Steve Allen to make sure that this is a mutually beneficial concession. And so they've asked for some maintenance provisions for the project for the street trees that we're requesting for this, for the streets, an approved species list that we can work with them through over the next couple of weeks, and as well as a root blocking mechanism so that there aren't any maintenance issues under the sidewalks. We think that this is gonna benefit the tree health for the project. It'll help the aesthetics of the neighborhood, and it's also gonna help with the short-term and long-term maintenance for these trees, and it's gonna assure that the tree coverage lasts longer so that trees aren't growing into people's houses and people don't either limb them up so that they don't ever mature or take them out altogether. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Have questions for? Anybody else in favor? Anybody opposed? Yes, ma'am. And be sure, sure to give name and address.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I am Chris Fraser. I'm at 6575 Baker Lane in the Lake Wally community. Normally, I don't have a verbal opinion on something outside of District 2, but I kind of take exception to this one. This has come before a different body at a different time, a couple months ago. And this particular request, when originally packaged, was basically requesting the reduction of trees slash calibers for 115 lots in two phases in this particular development. And it was not supported. The, the board at that particular time denied the request. So moving forward to this particular application under the PD standard, from what I've been able to understand, is that this request is now taking the entire development, the 650 dwellings, and kind of leveling it out and spreading out the trees. There's, they still are asking for a substantial reduction in the number of trees and the caliber. Anybody who's lived in this area knows that that was a wooded lot prior to development. So it seems like a stretch to try and get approval to take it from a wooded lot to an unwooded lot and use a different standard. It also seems like that in order to have a respectable number of trees, they're spet, they're spreading the responsibility that the developer has, in my opinion, to provide those trees to that community, to that homeowner, and spreading them out into the, the, the street trees, making them responsible for them. So you're having a homeowner responsible for a common space, which is an HOA issue, and things like that. I, you know, the only thing that changed from probably the original PD to when they started developing to where we are here, is that they put a large footprint of a home with a detached garage on a very small piece of land, and they didn't account for the trees that were required by our ordinance. So that's more poor planning than trying to ensure the health of the trees that eventually may survive. I object to that. I object to this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else opposed? There being none, do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Have a second discussion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson.
Just as I said last time, the, the issue with the ZBA is, is simply just, they shouldn't probably ever been in front of the ZBA, no, they shouldn't probably, they shouldn't have been in front of the ZBA. They should have come through rezoning the first time, and that's why the ZBA rejected this. Two, if you haven't driven through Brayden, you should, especially if you're thinking about saying no to this. Eight trees in a yard in Brayden that we're talking about, eight trees won't live a year and a half with your average homeowner before they start removing the trees. These trees are gonna be on top of their houses. They're gonna, they're gonna, it's all that's gonna be there, when you can count out eight trees on a, on a lot as small as this. Reducing it down, allowing them to put the street trees, allowing them to put in more street trees, or actually, street trees, and, and try to make up this difference. This, this is a good compromise solution. Certainly, we would have all preferred this been called at a planning stage earlier, but it wasn't, and that, and that's, that's what happens when you master plan a neighborhood, a large neighborhood sometimes. I, I view this as something that, this is a good compromise. This, this, this stops what I saw in Tega K, when they built the new areas of Tega K, and you'd wake up, you go to bed one night, and a tree was in your neighbor's yard, and you woke up next morning, and it was gone. And, and that's what you're gonna have here. People are gonna just go out and literally just remove these trees during the night or on the weekends. They're just gonna take them out so that they can, they don't touch their houses and destroy their homes. So ultimately, this is a good solution. Certainly, it does pass along to the HOA. If you remember the HOA, you know this. You know this going in. It's not like they're gonna, not like you're not gonna know, there's two trees sitting on the other side of the sidewalk right in front of your house. You're gonna see this going in. These are the type of things that homeowners should be looking at when they're making decisions on where they want to live anyway. So I, I ask for everyone to support second reading at this point.
Is that with the conditions noted?
With the conditions noted. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Winkler.
Just quickly, I was at that ZBA meeting, and I stated this last time we had this, but they did deny it, but they denied it because they felt like it should have been before us in the first place. Not that they disagreed with it, they felt like it was not something that should have been before them, that it was just.
Procedural.
Yeah, procedurally, they felt like that. So, so I'll support it tonight.
Any other comments? There being none. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Next item. Hold a public hearing and consider amending in third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to an existing fee of lieu of tax agreement between York County and the Lash Group and Kingsley Number Nine LLC so as to admit one new sponsor affiliate by Metal Funding Company LLC, the transferee, to bifurcate the fee agreement as to the obligations of the existing sponsor affiliate, Kingsley Number Nine LLC, and the transferee as an additional sponsor affiliate, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody here want to speak in favor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm Steve McCray. My mailing address is post office box 11429, Rock Hill SC 29731. I'm a lawyer, partner with K&L Gates. We represent Kingsley Number Nine LLC, which is the existing sponsor affiliate. I am, though, authorized to speak in behalf of the other parties to the agreement for requesting this amendment to the FELON agreement. As you may know, Kingsley Number Nine is a joint venture between Close Family Real Estate Partnership and Children's Klein, and as you probably know, that joint venture and other entities has developed a number of office buildings in Kingsley Park, is involved in the development of the LPL Financial Building, and we want to assure you that the parties intend to meet fully their commitment for Phase 2. This is a transfer of Phase 1, which is under construction now. Kingsley Number Nine has basically met its obligation to build that building, Phase 1, and it is transferring ownership of that building to a new party, Metal Funding Company LLC, which is basically a money fund. So new capital is moving in, capital's being freed up to invest again in another project in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Do we have a motion?
Move to close. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Move to close, is that what we're doing?
No, we're, we went past that. Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Next item.
Sorry, got ahead of myself.
Yeah, you were opposed, you weren't opposing the closing.
Right. I fixed that.
I didn't want to say anything.
I think bumped into that last time, rubbing off on me.
Okay. MGT Presentation to Counsel Regarding the 2015 Class MGT Presentation to Counsel Regarding the 2015 Class Compensative Salary Study.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have Nancy Stavina Robinson here with MGT tonight to present information on the process that we used in the class and comp study.
Thank you, Dave. Welcome.
She made Bill so nervous he called in sick.
That's exactly right.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm always pleased to come to York County. It's a beautiful place.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyway, let me make sure I've got this. Okay. All right, so the purpose of the conversation tonight is to, since the project was completed, I believe, in October, so it's been several months, the project, the total project duration was approximately nine months. But anyway, so what I would like to do tonight is to walk you through the project, how it began, what the steps were, the methodology that we went through, and then what the ultimate outcome of the project was, which you are familiar with. But I really want to walk you through the steps and answer any questions that you might have relative to how we got to the endpoint. Very simply, the project team, some of our past clients, that's just kind of me bragging since you asked me to come, project outcomes, what the work plan is, the process, how we collected the data, and then finally, the outcomes. Here is the project team. I just want to, again, introduce you to MGT of America. We've been in business for over 40 years, and I have been with MGT for 17 years. I am Vice President. I've been a partner with the company, and I have done a lot of different work in organizational design, classification, and compensation. And I've done, basically, I've worked in all the public sector operations. I've worked in K-12, higher education, state, and local governments. And in the work that we've done, as well as the work that my team has done, we really have an appreciation for the kind of work that's done in the public sector, because we've not only seen it from, you know, what people actually get paid and what their titles are, but also the kind of work that they do, and the infrastructure, and all the different issues that fit together to make the process work. Anyway, so you had a great team of people, including technical people. It's very important, when you do a project of this nature, that you control the data very carefully. You want to maximize the validity for the employees that you have. So, there are basically two things you want to make sure that you have. Clearly, you want to have external competitiveness, but you also want to ensure that you've got internal equity among the employees that you have there. So, those are really our two primary focuses. Past clients, we've done a lot of work in South Carolina. We've probably, we've had about 2,000 clients. Sometimes I feel like I've worked for every one of the company's clients. But anyway, a number of clients in South Carol... source for us, and it always is.
Is that the norm, about 23% or so respond to your...
Right.
Is that about average?
Yes, unfortunately. Because people have so many surveys that they are responding to. You know, they've got the Association of Counties, you know, and they've got BLS, and they've got other things to do. And so, it's pretty average, unfortunately. Okay, now, so after we decided that...
Can you go back to that previous? Of those groups, throwing out obviously Piedmont Medical, CMC, and Presbyterian, would all of those groups have been covered under your, whatever, the federal, the BLS?
The BLS.
So, they're captured in the BLS automatically?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Now, BLS doesn't have every single job that a county would have, for example. So, you can't ever match every single job and every single organization. So, you match as many as you can. Now, some, sometimes when people do these surveys, they'll just say, we'll go through and take a representative sample of your jobs, and we'll match those, because it's very expensive to do all your jobs. We don't do that. We try to find every single match that's out there. And so, we do a really, and there's, in your report, you can see how we matched. But you'll never get a one-to-one match on every job that you have, okay? You just don't. But yes, so all of these would be included in the, not all of them, but certainly the ones that you see here that were included in the BLS areas would be captured. Okay, I'm going the wrong way. Okay, all right. So, and then, sitting down with the county, these were the positions that were pulled for us to see if we could get additional data on. Anyway, no, you know, that's, so those were the ones that were selected. So, okay. All right, so next would be, all right, so now we go out, and we're starting to pull all the data, we're starting to match it. Now, we're also starting to put the job descriptions together, because when we go out to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, we go out to Group One in the, you know, the county surveys and stuff, we need to try as much as we can to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, okay? So, we start to spend a lot of time putting the new job descriptions together, going back and forth, looking in the federal database, seeing what kind of minimum qualifications they are, and doing the best we can. And it's not a perfect system, but the best we can to match as closely as possible. And as part of this, you got a wonderful response rate on employees filling out the job content questionnaire and updating their job descriptions. It was really amazing. I mean, people were really involved in the process, which is a wonderful thing. They got updated job descriptions. We probably went back and forth two or three times with all of the different supervisors and managers to make sure that the data were captured in the job description. And so, there were several back and forths. And as you can see there, over 311 job descriptions were rewritten. Okay? Okay, so here is then what you ended with, which you've, you know, which you've seen. But this is the new structure. All right, so you have one single pay structure, but now you have 70 pay grades, which is a lot, but I mean, so it's pretty specific. But I want to point something out. It's a different pay plan than it was before, okay? So, you've got 70 pay grades. Before, you had, I believe, 60, 60 pay grades or so. So, now, it's a different pay structure. Your minimum, and your midpoint, and your maximum, for like a pay grade four, is not going to be like it was with a four before. It's different. It's completely revised based on the job data that we got. So, the county basically said to us, what we want to do is we want to say, as many as you can match, we want those matched to the market point. And whatever that market point says, we pull that out, and you can review. We reviewed the data, said these are the market points. And then, that market point is considered your midpoint, and that is considered to be what you would want to pay competitively for somebody who has experience in the job. So, this is the way your pay plan was structured. Your midpoint would be for people who are in, for positions that are in that pay grade range, if they have some experience, three to five years, they would be at that midpoint. And then, we move back from there to determine what the minimum pay grade, the minimum pay ought to be, based on what you want that to be. And I believe, well, and it says, the 37% width. So, you had a minimum salary that was set 20% below, and the maximum was set at 17% above. All right, so that's what you decided. So, that was the way each pay grade was established, and then we go out and look at each job and see, that we had data for, and see where that fits, and then slide it into that pay grade. So, that's how the positions got slotted into each one of the pay grades.
Is that minimum and maximum ratio usually pretty much that scale?
Yes. Right. And so, and so that's basically, that's basically how it was done. All right? So, then what happens is, when we create a brand-new pay grade, the very first thing that the county decided they wanted to do is to say, with our new pay grade structure, we don't want anybody to be below the minimum, obviously. So, you get a new structure, and you say, the first thing that we want to pay, we want to use our money for, you have said this, would be to bring everybody up to the minimum. So, that's the first thing, and we gave you that dollar amount. So, I'm going to go to the next one, because I think that's on there. Yeah, okay. So, you said, all right, here we go. So, the adjustment to the minimum is going to cost a little less than half a million dollars, and that gets everybody up to the new minimum. Yay, all right. Then we say, okay, now, for all those people remaining that are now slotted into those pay grades, the policy that the county has set is that if you have five or more years of service, you should be at the market midpoint. So, we looked at everybody's service, and anybody who had five or more years of service had to be at at least that market point. So, there was a calculation done to determine how much that would cost. And then, we said, in working with the county, we want to make, put everybody on the pay line correctly if they have less than five years, because you don't want compression. So, if I have two years of service, I would be two fifths toward the new midpoint. So, we look at what their salary is, we calculate where they should be on that pay grade range based on two fifths of what the new midpoint is, and we calculate that money, and that's what that individual would get. If they have three years, four years, and so on, so every bit of, you know, every bit of the cost is captured there. That's called your implementation plan. So, when we're finished, everybody is slotted along the line. Now, as we tell employees when we started, everybody is not going to get a raise. This is a market study. All right? So, if you're already at market or above, that's good. And this is only a part of, and we say this because this is usually the case, a market study is only part of a total pay package. A total pay package usually says, well, we want to be at market, and we're not, we feel like we're not now, so let's do a market study, which you did. Then you may have a merit package, and that has nothing to do with this. You might want to put that on top of it. You might want to have just a cost of living increase, and that's on top of that. And you did that, I know. And so, this is just a small part. This basically, the idea of doing a market study is to say, here we are now, and ideally, we want to be competitive in our market, and based on all the stuff that we looked at. And so, you tell us, MGT, to the best of your ability, with the data that's available, what that would look like. You create it for us. So, we created it for you, and here it is. And then, we look at everybody that's out there, and we then slot them in where they would belong, and then calculate the cost. Now, and so, that is, that was your new pay plan, and that's how we came up with how much it would cost. Now, is there a perfect match for every job? No, there is not. There never will be. So, judgment has to be used, okay? And when we use our judgment, what we try to do is we try to look at the hierarchy of positions and determine, our first priority is to create internal equity for the organization. So, we say, okay, based on minimum qualifications, based on what the job description says, and so on and so forth, do these positions seem alike? And if they seem alike or close enough, then we're probably going to put them in the same pay grade, if they don't have a match. So, if we don't go out and say, this position has this particular match, we use our judgment, and that's part of this. So, we use our judgment, to the best of our ability, to match people in the pay grades that they seem to belong, and based on your organizational structure, and the information that had been collected from the job descriptions and the management issues paper. Okay? So, this is what we gave you, to the best of our ability, a market-based equitable compensation program. It treated everybody the same. And it treated everybody the same in that we used the same data. We used the Bureau of Labor Statistics, we used the information that I had said from the areas that were included in that data. We based it on updated job descriptions, we documented the results for you, everything is in the report that you had approved. We have additional data, if you'd like to see it, that, you know, lays the data out, you know, in a different way, so you can see exactly how we compared the positions in all the different, you know, all the different markets that I mentioned. And those, of course, you know, we worked with the county on many months ago. Cost to implement, phase, and options, and then guidelines for ongoing compensation, and those were included in the report. So, those give you some options on, you know, what you might want to do going into the future, you know, in terms of where you want to pay people. Sometimes we have, and county cities will have, hard-to-recruit positions, or they'll have positions that are just in high demand, for example. And sometimes, they want to set those aside, and they want to create a policy for those positions. And, you know, those are the things that, you know, as long as you know where you're starting from, and you know how you got there, if you're going to deviate, you need to understand how you're deviating and why, and what impact that has on the system that you've got. So, that's, that's the idea of having what you, you know, and then creating policies that get you where you want to be, but staying true to the, to the pay plan that you've created. Okay, so that was the outcome. And then, there we are. Anyway, so, you can call me, but I'm here.
Mr. Williams?
I appreciate what you've done, and it is definitely something that we needed to happen. And we've got a lot of people that are happy with the results. We don't hear from them.
No.
But we have, and looking through your process, I can see one of the reasons that, or one thing that I don't know if you could help us with, or we got to come up with, is those policies to deviate, because we've had questions to deviate, both internal comparisons and external comparisons. And we've seen, and it's easier to see, I guess, the external comparisons, because you go to Rock Hill, and you find out what they're making, and then, like you said, some of those specialty things. But I would, and I understand we're going to have to deviate, I would hope that we could come up with a way that, you know, whether it's doing, doing the kind of minimal salary studies, calling those three folks, or some kind of process to where it's still market, you know, still comparable and equitable comparison plan, and we don't have this department following these rules to change pay, and that department following that one. And I don't know if that's something you can help us with, or something that HR is supposed to come up with. But it was apparent, we asked you to do a lot of things, we didn't ask you to do that. And, you know, that is something that had been right in the specs now, that's the additional duty I would ask for, is to come up with, with a way to address those deviations, to make sure that they stay, stay market-driven and fair.
Right, right, yeah. Because one of the things that, you know, you have to, you have to make sure that you're going to be pulling the data from comparable sources, because what happens if you start doing something different than that? Then you're creating potential, you know, it's like, what are we going to decide is really our market? And once you decide that this is your market, it is, it is or it isn't. And you have to be consistent with your pay policies. And if you're going to be inconsistent, which you need to have a reason for, and there are plenty of good reasons. Many cities and counties and all kinds of organizations have reasons to deviate. I remember, you know, years ago, it was the nurses in certain organizations. I mean, you know, nobody could get nurses, and it was like, gee, a surprise. And, you know, then it was IT people, and it still is to some extent. And so, there were, there were issues that that created, and those had to be taken care of, and that sort of thing. So, but it needs to be measured.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Let's say, for instance, just pull a grade out of the air, grade 16, five years ago. Now, if you come in and you set a grade 16, is that grade still comparable in that sliding scale as what it would be today? So, if grade 16 was 25,000 to 42,000, five years ago, would grade 16 today still be somewhere in that...
A specific job? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of it. You know, the market has not changed in the last five or six years.
Because we've gotten questions about scale.
Scales, pay scales.
Yeah, so if someone had, the position was on 16, four or five years ago.
Right.
And now, it's, whether it went up or down, how would that factor into, did the data...
Then it would be, the data would show that. The data would show that that occurred. There hasn't been a lot of change in the market over the last five or six years for a majority of positions because of the, you know, the economic situation that's occurred. You know, and even now, I looked at the CPI index, and it's, you know, up, down, you know, and now it's down, you know, and that kind of thing. And then, of course, we had the backfill with a lot of, a lot of counties, especially in cities, you know, they were, they were backfilling the pay with benefits, and they were trying to keep up with the benefits. So, you know, so basically, you know, the market stayed pretty flat. But to your question, the data that we pulled was the most, was the most up-to-date data, all right? It was 2014, this was a '15 study, but it was May of 2014. So, it was the most recently published data that we could use for your pay plan, which would have been everybody's pay plan at that time, because they submitted the data. And so, we were pulling current data for, you know, and so, if a pay scale had changed for some, for a position, we would slot it according to the market, and then the pay grade range that was created would slot them where... grade range that was created would slot them where they belonged. So in other words, if they were fifteen before and they became a twenty, it really wouldn't matter where they were before, because we created your structure to be based on the market that we saw for all those positions. Am I, am I answering?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, so we use the most up-to-date data that we had, based on, you know, the overall market, which was the BLS.
Okay, I guess, if I don't hear any other questions, you're going to hang around for those particular questions, or is she not?
I don't think she was.
Oh, I thought, I thought she was.
Well, for after this meeting?
Yeah, for some individual questions on certain positions or whatever.
Well, you know, my recommendation, our recommendations are, you know, are what they are. So, I mean, I'm...
So you don't want to clarify, just if we had some questions about some particular, special, unique positions?
Well, are you, well, the report's been approved, and so are you suggesting we do another study?
No, no, I'm suggesting that I was informed that you would hang around to answer those questions at executive sessions.
All right, I will stay around.
That's what I was told in clear English.
Okay, I will stay around to answer questions.
Okay. Next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the County of York, South Carolina, in order to limit recommendations for appointees to the York County Natural Gas Board to three consecutive terms, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
To approve second reading.
Second. Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Got one no there. Jim, Cummings representative to provide the quarterly construction update, Jim Britton.
Thank you, good evening. Please refer to your council documents for the March slash quarterly update. We'll start with tab section one. Just as a point of reference, we've been doing these for quite a few months now, and it's been one, two, or three projects. We are actually reporting on nine projects over eleven facilities now. So we're really getting into the meat of this program, and...
Starting to be able to make your truck payment.
There's a lot of moving parts, but we'll start with York Fire Training Center. On Thursday, we conducted our final punchless inspection. It went well. There are some items remaining to be completed. One of the bigger items is the concrete pad. We've had some bad weather since October 1st of October, we've had almost thirty-eight inches of rain. To put that in perspective, a year's worth of rain in this area is about forty inches. So we've gotten quite a bit of foul weather. Having said that, within the next two weeks, we should have, in the next week, we should have that pad poured, following week, we should have the remaining portion of that pad poured. We will then move into our warranty stage, and we will be monitoring that project for the next year. We'll then conduct a one-year walkthrough to identify any potential items that are, need to be addressed or corrected prior to the warranty expiring. One item, we are approximately, we're still running through some, some numbers, we had to add some railings and some such during the final inspection, but we're going to be about twenty thousand under the budget, total budget, construction and utilities when this project is closed out. I do have, and this is, this has been included almost from the very beginning, and this is almost finished product, and it's aerial take in early March. Courthouse is our second project. We are actually picking up a pretty good bit of traction over the past month. Outside is moving probably quicker than the inside, just due to the asbestos and lead paint that we had to address. A couple of things that, of interest, the renailing of the tile roof and the refurbishment of the cornice, about seventy percent complete, I see that being finalized in short order, which would be a milestone of having the roof dried in. The next big item on the envelope is the windows. We've removed the palladium windows in the courtroom, the ones that are going to be restored. They're at the workshop now, being restored, they'll be reinstalled. We'll start removing the finetration of the windows and whatnot over the next month, and replace them with new. Then we've got a, kind of a tight shell, we start working on finishes. Having said that, we are doing a lot of the HVAC rough ends, we're doing a lot of the, really, the major building systems are being roughed in, along with the metal stud walls and...
Jim, can you clarify my memory a little bit on the windows?
Yes, sir. We're replacing all the windows except for the large palladium windows, and I've got a photo. So the palladium windows, this is inside the courtroom, the photo is not really that great. The photo on the right side are the, is the main courtroom, the big palladium windows, the large ones that have the half dome on the top, there's five on one side and four on the other, and those are being removed. Those are the ones that really have the historical significance, according to the historical groups, and those are the ones that we've elected to remove and then reinstall, and they'll be reinstalled with double-pane windows. The structure, the framing will look the same. The balance of the windows, double-hung windows and single-hung windows, will be replaced one for one with newer, energy-efficient type windows.
So the neutralization on the energy efficiency, the heat and air demand will be balanced with the double painting of the...
It will be, well, you know, the part that you cannot fix is the, is the framing in between the windows. The glazing itself, the lights themselves, will be dual-pane with, you know, the vacuum with a gas seal. So relatively speaking, they're going to be high-energy efficient, much more high-energy efficient than they are now.
And I don't want to drag this out, but what was the original plan to replace those?
When we first did our study, we were, we included replacing all of them.
And the history, historical group?
Historical group, we met with the local and state, and those were identified as fairly important to restore and retain.
Can you give me a figure on any added costs?
It's about a wash.
Okay.
About a wash. So we've got a couple photos. The photo on the left is our roof and cornice, we're really getting close to finishing. A photo on the right actually identifies several things. We can see HVAC piping, ductwork, rather. We see metal stud walls, and if you look right here, that's a VFR, VRF cassette, which your, that will supply the air exchange, and you'll have those almost in every office. So it's a, if you're familiar with mini-split systems, a little Mitsubishi, or that's a similar type of system, that's a VRF system. Photo on the left is, we had to, we bring in completely new electrical service from a new transformer. This is how we're getting it into the building. And in the right, this is where we still have scaffolding and whatnot in the efforts of removing the lead paint, they're also being used for the windows. And I've got two aerials here, one from both orientations, really it's, it doesn't show you a lot, except for how tight and how much activity is going on, on the property. This roof is going to be replaced with a two-ply modified, this roof is going to be replaced with a two-ply modified, and of course, this one is being renailed. Those roofs last forever and ever and ever. Unfortunately, that roof, when it was replaced, renailed in the nineties, they did not put the underlayment in, which can cause condensation, or, you know, really causes damage. The good thing is, we did not see a lot of rotten structure underneath. We really had anticipated encountering some, been minimal.
So the flat roofs, is that going to be membranes, rubber membrane?
Well, it's a, it's low slope, we don't have anything flat. And so it's a low slope, probably a quarter inch of foot, and it's going to be a two-ply modified roof, which means it'll have, it'll be a membrane roof, then another membrane roof, and then you'll have a cap sheet that has like a granulated surface on it.
Like a one pitch?
Well, it's less than that, but it's, it's about a quarter inch or eighth inch, but it's, it's not a low slope, but it will not hold water. So they're not the best, if you can put a pitch roof over a structure, that's your best bet, but we kind of have what we have here, and we didn't have the opportunity to change.
Can we keep building them?
Sometimes, I mean, if you build them right, they work well. The East Spec Building...
Let me back you up, Jim.
Certainly.
Next order of business, we're going to have a change order on this courthouse. Is this courthouse on budget?
Well, we've only executed, this would be the, if this is executed, it'd be the only, only one change order we've executed. We've, we've identified, and we've kind of packaged one together, and that was all the lead paint and asbestos now. We have not finalized, and we identified a kind of a worst-case number, we have not finalized that number. It's five hundred and sixty-something to start with, we feel that's going to come down closer to five than it is now. That coupled with the, that coupled with this change order would put us right at our budget. Now, that would actually still leave about a hundred thousand dollars in general contingency. So...
So for the whole project?
Pretty superstitious, so I don't, you know, want to say, well, I think the coast is clear, because it's never clear, but we really have identified a lot of the things out there. You know, the roof structure wasn't, the one thing that really concerned me the most about getting in and costing additional funds that we couldn't verify, is the thing that really hadn't cost that much. Having to renail that roof, I would have never thought in a, you know, in a hundred years that we would have to do that, just because it looked like in good condition, but when we started taking off the tile around those chimneys, because we had to reflash those, lo and behold, there's, there's no underlayment. So that was, that was a true unforeseen condition.
I guess we saved some money then.
Well, it's probably a thousand dollars of the material that's costing, you know, seventy-plus thousand now.
Right. So what you're saying is, after this add-on that we're about to vote on, we're about a hundred thousand left to keep us under budget for the rest of this construction?
Correct. Round numbers.
Are we still looking at December of this year completion?
The contractor has that, based on the, you know, the number of days that they were delayed on the first part. We're negotiating those days out, I think it'll be before December. But they have that, based on the critical path that was delayed. Any other questions? Okay, so East Spec Building, all the bad weather, this has really been, this site is very vulnerable, has been. We're getting some good weather. So we're really hitting site work and building pads is our main concern, we've found some unsuitable soils on the building pad, it's being removed and replaced with suitable soils. We reported in the document last month that the steel and the precast has already been fabricated and is being, is stored. So once we get foundations up, we can really start making hay. We should start seeing the first foundation in the next two weeks. Another item that's running parallel to the building pad is the storm sewer system, we're about forty-five percent complete there. I've got a couple, an aerial, a couple of shots. On the left is the building pad, they're proof rolling it, it's, it's good soil. On the right is the detention or sediment pond, it's, obviously, it's got a lot of water in it, it was taken not too long ago. And we have an aerial photograph. I tried to orient this, it's not exact, but I did try to orient in your packet the first exhibit that I showed with this, so you can kind of overlay and see how the, the actual versus the concept goes together. The Moss Justice Center, we are really, these, we're starting to start talking about a lot of the, the new projects that are part of the bond, Moss Justice Center, expansion, the new family court, heckle, Public Works, new admin, we're all kind of in the same stage. We've done almost all of the kickoff meetings, we have conducted most of the one-on-one meetings tomorrow, and Wednesday, we have two full days here with the, with the admin facility, with the architect. And what we're doing is verifying what was in the Boomerangs report, verifying that program, making sure that, and believe it or not, so far, it's, it's, it's not exact, but it's getting, it's, it's close. Either case, we're going to be under, you know, these projects are going to be under scope, which means they're going to be under budget, we're going, on scope, on budget, as we move forward. Moss Justice and the Family Court, both of those are handled by the same architect, Mosley. They're tracking almost side by side, and we are anticipating having our schematic design complete by mid, mid-April. With that, we would bring them in and have them present to council the schematic design, which would be the floor plan, some elevation, some sites. So mid to late April is when we would have that. Incidentally, it's the first chance that we have to put together a firm schematic, or a firm estimate based on that specific design and layout.
And I'll speak for myself, all council members can speak for their self, but I think I've been assigned to the admin building, but the Family Court building in Rock Hill, I can't remember if I was a part of that one.
Bruce is, I know.
Bruce is, but I have some interest in that, too, that I want to...
Was that appointment?
Yeah.
Well, we welcome everybody that, I guess we need to miss a quorum, but...
I'm curious on the, you are overseeing the contract documents as well, and making sure the adequate protections are in place in order to avoid past issues that we've had, and make sure that we've got the most protection we possibly can have for citizens.
We, we implement the, we do several things. The front-end documents, the specifications are critical. It kind of tells you how to interpret, and we use our documents that we've built over thirty years, and I've had very good success. And we work with Mr. Kendry here with developing the actual contract between the contractor and the owner, the architect and the owner. So that's a, we, we offer our input, and we have a good bit of conversation, collaboration amongst us, but the documents are already built, that document is already built. So I think I'm answering your question, but we oversee every part of it. We oversee the, making sure that these, the actual specifications are not single-source, that they are actually what you want, not what the architect thinks you want. So it's, it's a lot of...
We have standard in the industry warranty protections, you're looking out for those sorts of things.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And in a lot of cases, more so. I won't go into each one of these projects, we'll stop and talk for a second on two of them, though. Fort Mill and Clover Magistrate, we are, we have not kicked that off, we can't, we haven't finalized that contract with the architect, because before we, we've got to finalize the scope, and that scope is based on purchasing a existing facility. Once that existing facility is procured, then we can get off and run it. Those two really need to track together for the economy of scale, because they're two smaller projects, we see them bidding at the same time. And then the Public Works, although we've kicked it off on the majority of the public work components, and one that we have reserved is the, is actual recycling center. We've recommended going out with RFQs to retain an architect specific to the duties there. It's a very technical project, and so that we've advertised, and we are waiting to get that, that services procured. Any questions? Tab section two is our, there are two schedules. The first one is Phase One and Two, it's the red line, well, here's March, so we're right in here. So we're comfortable with where we are on the, on the schedule. This is, has a lot more information and activity. This is Phases Three and Four. When I say Phase One and Two, that is the fire training, the courthouse, and the East Spec. Phase Three was the bond referendum, Phase Four is the new admin building, and this represents the schedule, it's updated as of last week. And with that, if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to...
Jim, you expect, based on this timeline, what I'm just looking at on my screen, is to have broken ground on every referendum project by the end of this year?
Not all of them. A lot of them, yes. If you, this is the, I think this is our end of the year timeline. So we're, you know, we've tried to, and this group of projects are all, that's all public works. It's critical that we... It's critical that we not bid right on top of each other. We've got to stagger them out a little bit, otherwise, we're going to be competing with ourselves, and we're going to saturate the market and cause, really move the market, turn it from an owner's market to a contractor's market, and it's happening anyway. But we don't want to compete against ourselves. And we, we actually get out and canvass other folks, other organizations, and try to make sure that we're not having bids at the same time, you know, another middle school is.
How far do you space out the bids?
Thirty days is what we try to do.
For that, one project thirty days ahead of another, but you could have one project that's six months behind another because of that. Who is, then, assuming that is happening, who is picking the priority of what project should be bid first?
Well, the way we're handling them is first in, first out. But the major ones we're in are the, the Family Court is a major one, Moss Justice is a major one. Reason why Moss Justice is kind of important is we've got to get at least several component, they're multi-phase, both of those. And so just doing one of them doesn't mean you're finished. For example, Moss Justice, we've got to, to build the expansion, we've got to overtake a parking lot. In order to overtake that parking lot, we need to do something about the parking. We can do something temporary, but we really need to build that parking deck first. Now, having said that, we can't build that parking deck, start to finish, and then start, it can't be that linear. We have to overlap. So the ones that have those long processes, we need to get on as soon as we can. For example, you can't do the heckle renovation, we shouldn't do the heckle renovation, not all of it, until the new Family Court is finished because some of those spaces are moving out of there, going to the new one. We're going to be reorganizing some of the space. So those are probably not the best examples, but we've got those in all. Public Works is the same way. To renovate or replace some of those facilities they have, we've got to tear down some, we've got to find temporary homes for them. So to answer your question, Family Court and Moss Justice are leading the way, followed shortly, hopefully, behind with this, this facility because this one is also multi-phase. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Next item is what Mr. Johnson just mentioned. Council to consider a courthouse change order to lightner in the amount of seventy-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council, let's see. Consider approval of nominated applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee of March 7, 2016, along with nominations from the floor. I'll let Mr. Johnson take over.
Move to approve Ashley retained Catawba Mental Health Board, Ed Lindsey Bethel Fire Tax District Board, David Beatty Economic Development Board, Thomas Templeton Board of Assessment Appeals, and Billy Hare Bethesda Fire Tax District Board.
Second.
Okay, and there being no nominations from the floor. Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council to consider a request from Sheriff Bruce Bryant to allow Deputy Broadus Strain to retain his service weapon.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider approving a venue agreement between York County and the River Basin Tournament Trail to host a kayak fishing tournament.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council to consider allowing summer feeding program to apply for the United States Department Agricultural Summer Food Service Program for the 2016 summer season.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council to consider the approval and authorize the county manager to sign AT&amp;T's utility relocation agreement for an additional hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents for a total of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-six cents for Penny's Three Program Project Congress Street and Leacon Road Roundabout.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
I do have a little bit.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cox.
I won't be moving forward to approve this because I think our job is to make sure that we're being accountable to the citizens. I have some questions. It looks like just a year ago, AT&amp;T made up, identified that the relocation costs would be about a hundred and fifty thousand, and now it's only a year later, and that's now two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And apparently, there was no, nothing included in the budget for utility relocations for, for really any of the projects, although they're being approved, and this is information that I just received because I was asking questions about the whole relocation of utilities issue, which is, which is something I think that we need to take a broader look at. We probably need to get the utilities in here if we're going to manage the costs because what we see are cost overruns on all these projects. And best I can tell, it looks like this particular project is going to go over by two hundred and fifty thousand because that wasn't factored in. And, you know, at some point, we, we need to do like some of the other councils are doing, and I've asked some specific questions of Patrick Hamilton, who's doing a great job getting up to speed and helping our county get a handle on things that we can do differently for the Penny's program. But some things that I would like to see is that we have an, you know, just an in-house audit of what are the utility relocation costs that we've incurred in Penny's One, Two, and Three, general numbers, what we anticipate them being going forward, so that we can factor that in in terms of budgeting. Because what has happened is the projects at the end are getting, we can't be short-sighted. The projects at the end are getting cut off. In fact, I understand that two million was cut off of Highway Seventy-two project and the, and the last one. Highway Seventy-two has been on the books. This is the second Penny's referendum that this has been on. And for whatever reason, from Penny's Two, it went, instead of it getting priority in Penny's Three, it went to the very bottom of Penny's Three, which means that it is potentially in jeopardy of not being funded fully and, and at administration, administrative fees are being pulled from that. So these small incremental decisions that we make impact the end and whether or not we can accomplish that. Yeah.
And it's the extension from where it's finished now?
From nine oh one down to Rambo. That's what we're speaking of.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Anderson.
You say you just got that information when?
Well, these were questions that I was asking about this. We get these questions, and I think this is where we need to make some changes in our processes. And this is something that I think staff and the citizen ad hoc committee is looking at is how do we prevent, and what is the process for us approving increases? The problem with it is that when you bid a project, you don't know. Right now, we're still in budget. So to answer this question today, we're still in budget. It won't be until after we go to construction phase that we realize that we're going to be over budget. So we will have now lost an opportunity to try and fix that. I don't know that stopping the progress of this project is the right thing to do, but we are losing an opportunity to pull the utilities together and to get a handle on what, what is this going to cost us since it was not factored into the original numbers? And we've already gotten way over budget on two of the projects, including the first one, the Gold Hill Road Connector project. That is way over budget.
If I were to withdraw my second, would there, would that be justification to, for us to go back and renegotiate this, this situation and actually begin the process of changing rather than just moving forward as far, as far as rubber stamping possibly?
Well, if you withdraw, withdraw your second, I'll ask for another second from somebody else, and we'll continue discussion.
I think the question that she's having is whether you withdraw it or not, we need to get a better process in place to address this. Not so much this one, but the process is not working with some of these relocation, utility relocations.
Well.
Obviously, we've got to move them.
The point Ms. Cox is making, which I agree with, is that, like I've talked about for five years, and that's why I formed the Penny's Committee, is there's a leak somewhere, and we've got to put the fingers in the dyke. And I appreciate Ms. Cox being chair of that committee now, being aggressive about this and really resourcing it to, I mean, we've got to address it. We can't keep talking about addressing it, we have to address it. So I think this is a step in the right, I mean, it's legitimate concerns. David, do you have any comments?
I would have to refer to any staff on this and whoever's been involved in the negotiations.
I, and to what Ms. Cox just said, I, I've watched overruns on the Hubert Graham Parkway for utility, you know, moving, moving those utilities. And not only have they pushed the project back from a, they've closed a road that was supposed to be reopened in March, and now the county's announced, well, hopefully, May-June as a, as a time to do it. I certainly think we need to bring in, and whether it's the full council or just that committee, sit down with the utilities, both wet and dry, and try to figure out how, how to make this process that we can more properly estimate the actual cost and make it run smoother and on a timely basis. Because when they can't move a utility, they cost us money. We have people on the ground ready to go, and you don't know in this environment whether the cost of asphalt is going to rise, and since gas has fell as low as it did now, is rising back up into the forties, that's real dollars for us from the time we could have been pouring and putting down asphalt to the time we can't. I applaud you for, one, catching that, and, two, wanting to address it. I would ask, though, that you share any information you get on this with, with all of us so that we can, we can kind of see it. Because if you got information, say, today, I'm sure a host of us didn't get any information today on it. So it'd be helpful moving forward that we all, all had it, you know, obviously, you can't afford it immediately, but, you know, tomorrow, this week, so that we all have it, so we can review it and be able to ask our own questions.
Right. Well, I think this was on the agenda. And so all I did was look at our agenda packet that showed where AT&amp;T went from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty. And their explanation for that is simply, in, in the write-up that we had gotten was increased cost of materials and inflation. Well, a hundred thousand dollars is not going to happen in a year. That is not going to happen. So either they didn't do that correctly, or we're at the mercy of what, how are we gauging this, and it's not been factored into the original estimate. This could really get us out of whack, and we need to start figuring out what this budget shortfall is going to be so that the Penny's Four folks are aware of that and can consider that in their discussions when they go forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to withdraw my second at this point because I, I think that that is very worthy of reconsidering and, and asking these folks as to why such a dramatic increase in that shorter period of time.
So we have the original motion. Do I have a new second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we're back at discussion again. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I'm trying to read the, I do, I mean, the history of where the utility locations came from. In Penny's One, we only had, we only paid for utilities that were, that had prior rights. In other words, if, if there were some utilities that we would widen and people were just in the right of way and that they had to move it. We were breaking our utilities, and AT&amp;T wasn't one of them, but Clover and York and even Rock Hill, people that, that, people that were having to, having to pay to move utilities, widen roads, and they were getting to the point where they were threatening to or going to fight Penny's because they, because it was costing money, they couldn't keep up with the way Penny's was going. So there was an agreement to incorporate utility movements, to incorporate utility movements into Penny's so that it wouldn't penalize utilities companies. Now, if there's a problem that we have, you know, we're having with, the agreement is, is we just reimburse them for all their direct costs. If there's a problem with those costs, if we think there's a problem with, with certain utilities overestimating costs, I certainly think it needs to be addressed. But again, I think it needs to be done up front as opposed to at the last minute. Do see that, I mean, I'm trying to, there's, there's three paragraphs of explanation why they raised, raised the price that I am trying to read right quick and can't do it and talk at the same time.
Well, I think the reality, too, is that if we stop right here, then that, of course, and I'm not saying it's wrong to do that, I'm just saying that if we don't support this at this time, then it's back to the drawing table and the utility company won't do any relocation, which then stops the road for that time, which then in that self.
Costs us money.
Costs money. And I'm not saying that to support moving forward with this, but I'm just trying to bring forth the factors that we all have to consider because I think we need to stop the leak.
And this, my, my concerns have nothing to do with the specific project. I think I'm raising, you guys may already know this. These are questions I just asked and realized that Penny's One didn't have any relocation. Penny's Two didn't, and then Penny's Three did, and the reasons why are problematic. And what is it, and how are we estimating it, is something that we've got to look at going forward. And I don't, I invite Patrick, if he wants to say, you know, anything on this topic.
Patrick, do you want to?
To whether or not this will put us back.
He's back there shaking his head.
I don't know that, I know that, I don't think that.
Yeah, for the, with Penny's Three, I wasn't here in 2011 when Penny's Three voted for. But it's my understanding was the adding utility was kind of the eleventh hour. Some of the utility companies were threatening to vote against Penny's Three. So the county, I think, made the decision to include all the utilities, the county would pay for them, kind of the eleventh hour. So that's why they weren't included in some of the estimates that were done by the outside estimating firms.
Can you address her concerns about the overage?
Wow, the hundred thousand.
The hundred thousand, yes. We asked the same question to AT&amp;T, and they told us the first estimate of one fifty was their, how did they word it? Their, their quick quote.
Wag. Their quick.
Their quick quote based on the rough set of plans. And once we sent them, once they had a final set of drawings, they ran the full design analysis, sent it through their price, cost estimating software program that they use and got detailed numbers for the updated cost estimates. Now, we asked them to provide unit cost and rates and all that they, that would, so we could see how much they're going to be charging, and they told us that was proprietary information, and they would not release that to us. However, once they, this two hundred and fifty-seven is just an agreement, that's not what we're having to pay at this point. They'll send all their invoices to us for the work they do for us to review. We can check their prices, we can let our consultant look at, review their invoices and make sure it's in line with the work that they're supposed to be doing.
So I've got a very unfair question for you. If we have this voted down tonight, any clue about the added costs to the delays?
Depends on how long this project is delayed. I will say, we just got de-hec approval for this project, so it's almost ready to go out to bid.
Can you tell me how much of the utility relocation on this project sits in existing county right-of-way?
I cannot tell you that off the top of my head.
And the reason I ask that is, if you have, utility company has a right-of-way in your yard, and you put a shed over that right-of-way, and they later decide to come back, you're the guy paying to rip down the shed and move it and then rebuild it, not them.
That's because they have prior rights. That's, that's where that whole argument comes in.
But if we have that here, and we're then paying you for not having located your utilities outside of our right-of-way, that seems, that seems fundamentally wrong to me. I mean, that I'm paying you to have, you, you put your stuff in my right-of-way. You could have gotten your own easement and done it yourself, you chose not to. I don't want to squeeze the utilities, but I certainly, when, when AT&amp;T says, we're not even going to share our numbers with you because it's proprietary, it makes me having a difficult time to feel real sorry for AT&amp;T who put. If they, if, in this case, they have their things in our right-of-way.
Did we commit ourselves to pay all utility relocation fees? And right, I mean, is that, is that a policy in practice, or is that something that we, that is in the ordinance that is where we are? Do we know?
Mr. Kendry, do you?
Oh.
Yeah, I think there was, it was a policy in two and they made it a commitment in three, if I, if I remember correctly, but I.
Well, I think we need to know that.
Yeah, that's a good question. Mr. Wickler?
Yes. Yeah, this is in my district, so, excuse me. I want to say, I think Councilman Cox has brought up a ton of good questions. And I think they're all things that we need to look at and address before we put together the list and budgets and everything for Penny's Four. But I don't think it would be in the best interest to go, to stop everything we're doing for Penny's currently till we figure all that out. I think we need to be looking at it, we've got, I think we've got some good questions, but to stop this project, I think, would cause more of an overrun in the end than continuing with it at this point.
Patrick, another unfair question. If there was a two-month delay, could you give me a figure based on that?
Not an accurate or fair assessment, no, sir.
Any further discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Why, why can't, with, with these very legitimate concerns here, certainly, they wouldn't want to jeopardize the future activities and, you know, what they need to do to be able to, you know, make this, all this work. I mean, certainly, this could be negotiated rather. I mean, certainly, this could be negotiated rather soon. I mean, would you not want to at least give it that much of a chance for the next, see what can be done in the next two weeks?
Any comment on that?
Well, I think we've tried to do that with them, to try to get some of their unit prices and rates from them, and they haven't shared that with us, so trying to go back to them and get them...
If the agreement is that we reimburse them for their direct costs, and there's not a whole, but that goes back to Ms. Cox's question about whether there is a written policy that we reimburse them for their direct costs. My understanding that there is, but my understanding is not always 100%. That's what we pay y'all for.
Can we approve this upon some type of conditions and have our county attorney send something, you know, I mean, because I wouldn't want to just pay a bill that you send me saying, "This is what you owe me," without a breakdown.
Well, that's how we've been doing it for a long time.
And if I understand what Patrick just said, we are, we have not, we're approving a budget, and they will bill us...
Correct.
...as it comes along. So what we're proving on this point is the budget for having the relocations done, not the actual bill, because they will be billing us as they do the relocations.
So it could be higher. It could be lower, it could be...
Could be higher, could be lower. Typically, in the past, typically, it comes in lower. That's just as we've seen in the past, they get out there and their costs aren't as high as they anticipated at the beginning. I think maybe they try to cover themselves on the front end of it.
But we will see a breakdown once the bill comes, okay.
Or you could add into the motion something depending on the proven cost of the relocation or something to that effect. Or we could...
If it's a requirement that we pay it, if it is, if it is a written ordinance policy of this council that we have to pay this relocation fee, period, and voting it down won't do anything, to achieve nothing. However, if it's just a policy, we kind of...
And that's the answer we all have.
Buddy, buddy, we'll just do it for you, because we like you, and we're trying to be good neighbors, then that is something we can negotiate. And I'm having, I guess my heartburn is, without knowing the answer to that question, it's hard for me to just vote.
What would a two-week deferral do to you?
Could I, since I made the motion, withdraw the motion and ask that we determine between now and the next council meeting if it's a legal requirement, or if it's just the policy we've been doing, and put it back on the next council agenda for us to vote on at that time.
So you made the original motion?
Yes.
So who made it? Chad, is that acceptable to you?
If he withdraws a second, it doesn't, I mean, I can make a new one, but, you know, that doesn't matter if he withdraws the motion.
So now we have withdrawal of the motion, so do we have a motion to defer for two weeks?
I'll make the motion to defer for two weeks till we find out...
Second.
...if we are legally bound to pay.
Okay, and I think we've talked this enough, so if everybody's agreeable, we're good? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I appreciate the due diligence there. Next item, request authorization to apply and accept if awarded a South Carolina Coordinating Council grant in the amount of $100,000 for Project Bond, no local match.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, request authorization to apply and to accept if awarded a South Carolina Coordinating Council grant in the amount of $100,000 to assist York County with real property improvements for Project Gabriel, no local match required.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, request authorization to apply and to accept if awarded a South Carolina Coordinating Council grant in the amount of $200,000 to assist York County with real property improvements for Project Crown, no local match required.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, consider adoption of an inducement resolution identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, as amended, so as to allow investment expenditures incurred by Project Crown to qualify as expenditures eligible for a fee in lieu of tax agreement with York County, and committing to enter into such necessary agreements with Project Crown to effectuate the intent of this resolution and other matters related thereto.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, the sheriff requests council to ratify a grant application, except if awarded a South Carolina Department of Safety grant in the amount of $88,124. The local match is 10% or $8,812, and will be funded from the sheriff's discretionary funds.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, sheriff requests council to ratify a grant application and to accept an award of $62,169 from the South Carolina Department of Safety Grant. The total project cost for the grant is $77,711 and 20% or $15,542, is the local match, which will be funded by sheriff discretionary funds.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Chairman, I'm... Mr. Johnson.
I read this, and what it, and if I read it correctly, it allows the sheriff to hire a victim advocate position for nine months, and then that physician, assuming that the grant is not renewed, would become a full-time, would be something that this council would have to carry. I am opposed to the use of grants as a way to hire employees that the county then eventually has to become the, to pay for. Certainly, if it was an ongoing grant, and you said, oh, or that person was only going to work nine months, that'd be one thing, but that's not going to happen. This person's going to have a reoccurring. What I'd prefer to see is that these are included during the budget process, that these grants are somehow factored into that. This hasn't been, and this just, and happens to be that it's for the sheriff's office, but I've seen these grants for other groups, that we come through, and that's how we just hire these employees. And then when we get to a budget, and we say, somebody says, "Well, I want to hire 24 employees this year for the county," and this group says, "No, we're not, we're going to hire five." Well, it's because you hired two or three along the way throughout the year through these various grants, then you ended up picking up the tab. I think a better way, there has to be a better way than just approving these one-off things, and I think they ought to be run through the budget. So I'm going to vote no on this for that grounds.
And that was, well, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead, I'm always the last. Mr. Lottie.
I remember a couple of these coming through. I'm not quite sure if we've done it, if I remember, with the sheriff's office, but I know Kevin's, Kevin has brought some things through, hiring people on temporary grants, and I had the same concern about, you know, at the end of this grant cycle, you know, how do we, how do we transition from continuing with this person? How do we transition to dropping this person off? And is this something that's kind of, I don't want to use the term a backdoor way of getting more people on staff, because I know, once we get people, we're going to have a need to keep them on. That need never goes away once we get that person, because now we've taken on, whether it's a victim's advocate, or some role in the organization that we can utilize that person. And it may not be doing the same, in the same capacity, but we would like to hold on to them. No one wants to get someone, and it's hard to get people to say, "Come, commit to us, but it's only going to be for nine months, and I got to let you go." There, I'm sure there has to be some conversation that, well, we're going to try to get you in, get you on board, it's a temporary situation, but hopefully transfer or transition into a full-time position. Because there's no way I would come on board knowing, wholeheartedly, this is a nine-month assignment, unless I'm working through a temp agency. And I don't think the county uses temps, temp agency. But to bring someone on board for temporary, based on temporary money, I think it's, we'd be hard-pressed as a council to take that person away from, whether it's the sheriff's department, solicitor's office, or anybody. So I think we kind of pigeonhole ourselves into making that decision of keeping that person on, or finding a way to fund that position. And I don't, I don't think that's, that's kind of, I hate to use the term circumvent, but it feels like we'll pigeonhole ourselves into keeping that person, adding that money to the bottom line of the budget to keep them. So it, it's, we've done it before with the agreement that there's no promises made by council, there's no promises made in the budget process, and I know, we try to massage this budget and look at all the line items. I just think, I just think it'll, it may or may not get past us, but I don't like the, I don't like the temporary concept. Now, if there's some reoccurring money that's longer than just stretch of time, five-year grant, something that would, would hold up test of time, but short-term, I think we're kind of backing ourselves in a hole to commit down the road to keeping people like this, whether it's from the solicitor's office, sheriff's office, or anywhere in our organization.
So you're saying you just, in deference, essentially agree with Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
That this needs to be in the budget?
And I will add to what Mr. Lottie just said. You know, we had this discussion six weeks ago, and one of the things I asked staff to do at that time was to make sure that if we are approving these, that there is actually a line item in the budget that shows, these are the reoccurring, these are the, I guess the grant people that we're about to pick up, so that we could see it. I just, my fear is, in a budget that is two inches thick, three inches thick, that is easily lost and not seen and just passed through, so.
So who gave the motion on this again?
I believe I did.
You did? So I, I don't guess there's a possibility of having some condition on the motion, that it has to be...
He's about to jump out of the chair.
Well, at some point, it does make sense to do, if you're going to hire one anyway, it makes sense to use the grant to hire the folks. I don't know if that's the case, but in the past, that's what it's been based on. If we're going to hire one anyway, we get the grants. I do know that it is separate in the budget, but you're right, if you don't look for it, you can miss it. But it does end, and then we have to, there's another place where we have to approve doing that. We've done it both ways. We have decided to fund them later, and like I said, that's usually when we see it coming, and we can get a grant to pay the first couple of years. And we have also chosen not to fund them, but typically, through attrition, we'll move that person to somewhere else. But assuming that, what it does do for us is it pays the equipment, too. It's not just the cost of the person. So if, I mean, if we're going to hire the person anyway, I think it makes sense. If we're just getting a grant so we can add a person, I would agree.
I think we're back to where we started.
But isn't that the, what the budget process is for? For us to determine whether or not we're going to hire somebody, as opposed to a grant process? I mean, I agree with what you're saying. If we're going to hire that person anyway, we should use the grant to help offset the cost. But the real question is, is the council, should the council not do that during the budget process?
Right. And during, well, that's where it comes from, what we have to do during the budget process. If we get to that point, and that person is not necessary, then we don't fund it, and the grant goes away, and we just, like, you know, it becomes a temporary position. But you're right, where, you're going to have the guts to do that, or you're going to have the guts to kill it now. But assuming that it's, that it's something that we need, it would be funded, or we'd find future grants.
Bruce, you want to make any comment?
I certainly would. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for calling on me. First and foremost, I think all of you know me well enough, I wouldn't ask you for something I didn't need. We are in desperate need of another victim's advocate, so we can have this money, and this money is indebted. Now, they can stop it, don't get me wrong, but typically, these grants on these type of applications are year after year after year with matches. And then when they start to let you know, they go down gradually. And like Chad said, if there was a reason that the council chose not to continue with the funding, you can look at our numbers and certainly tell that we can certainly, through attrition, we can bring this person into employment elsewhere in the organization. But I would tell you that this is something that's desperately needed in the sheriff's office. We've been trying to get a, another victim's advocate for years and years. We've been turned down by this council for years and years. And to answer your question, Mr. Johnson, you can't do it on a budget. I didn't know this grant was even in existence, and if we don't make application and accept this grant, then we're turned down. We can't, we can't say, wait on our budget to pass in July, and then we'll let you know whether or not we want this grant. It doesn't work that way. It comes out on a certain date, you've got so many days to get these grants back in, and then you, but you've got to make a move. And, you know, and I'm going to tell you this, if, you know, if we don't approve this tonight for us to go ahead with the grant, I'm going to be putting full cost in my budget again this year. You may turn it down. Again, I understand you've got that right, but it's certainly something that we are desperately needing. There's been so much new legislation, and Ms. Cox, you and Mr. Johnson may have seen some of this come out of the General Assembly, on domestic violence. We have got to have a domestic violence investigator, and that's what we're going to really use this position for, is to help with domestic violence investigations. And the case load, the added duties that the state has put on us with this new bill, not only have we needed it in the past, but I can't promise you, I'm not going to ask for another one. But I can tell you this, definitely, I'm going to ask for one, and this is a great way for us to get started on this.
Question, Bruce, you did ask for one last year's budget, correct?
I did.
Okay, Mr. Henderson.
I was just going to ask, as far as the one that you have now, is that, is that through a reoccurring grant, the person that you have?
No, it's paid by...
Or the others?
It's paid by victim services. Every, everybody that goes through the criminal justice system pays a fine, and a portion of that fine goes toward, this, you remember about years ago, when you voted on the Victims' Bill of Rights? That's, this is a part of the Victims' Bill of Rights. But this grant process is not, because there's not enough funding in that Victims' Bill of Rights, where the distribution of funds on a state level coming back to the county, or when the county collects. We collect from TDK, we collect from Clover, we collect from Fort Mill and York. Rock Hill has their own victim's advocates. They've put in for this grant, they've been awarded another victim's advocate through the same grant process we're doing. If I'm not mistaken, solicitor, is this the same grant process you're using?
Yes, it's the one I applied for under, it's a Boca grant. I haven't seen yours, but we had a Boca grant application that came forward, and I came before council, and I justified my position in much the same manner I would have if we been in the budget process. I explained what the position was needed for, why we were seeking that position, what that person would be doing. And in this instance, we do need that person, just like Bruce does. And in three or five years, I believe, the Boca grant goes for, that will pay, you know, 8% of the cost of this. We're not going to get smaller in five years, y'all. Crime's not going to go down, so.
It's supposed to be SARS-AIDS, SARS-AIDS, we've been in debt.
Yeah, SARS-AIDS went on for seven, eight, nine years, and there was no end to it.
Any other comments?
David, can you, and this is, you probably don't know, can you tell me, though, why the administration declined the sheriff's request for this position last year in the budget? Do you have any recollection on why?
No, no.
Well, I'd have been impressed if you could have answered that one.
Because the rest of them are funded with victim's advocate money, and they didn't want to start using county money, when they were, they were hoping that there would be enough revenue generated through the victim's advocate funds. Am I correct, Kevin? Kevin and I have fought over victim's advocates.
The victim advocate funds he's referring to are generated by the fines and fees, as he said. They're required, we are required constitutionally to provide certain level of service to victims, and we have to notify them when they're released from his detention center. I have to notify them when there's a court hearing going on, provide assistance to them in court, so they can understand what's happening in front of them. Counsel them, through there, guide them to resources for counseling and therapy, perhaps of financial compensation for funerals and that sort of thing. Bruce is required, when he's investigating a case, to advise, kept them up to speed on this, on the status of it. If they get out on bond, or there's a change in their bail condition, my people have to tell them, this is not like, you may do this, or if you feel like it, or if you've got time, could you give them a call? I'm required to do this by law, and so is he. Those funds are not nearly enough to cover. We get, I think, maybe $150,000 or $175,000 a year that's divided up. Now, the magistrate's having a responsibility as well, some of the money goes to them. So it's divided up among law enforcement, detention center, solicitor, and magistrate judges, who are required to do stuff under the Rights Act. I know you all, I didn't come prepared to tell you all about this, but I can get a little presentation and explain exactly what you've got going on with victims, give you more detail than you ever want.
So I got, everybody's said their piece. I'm just going to add to that, I think after hearing Bruce speak, it's obvious that there is a need for it. So getting past that, now, my thing will be more of a, David, maybe help, would you get in with Beth? If there's some way that they can note on the budget line... If there's some way that they can note on the budget line items about this position originated by a grant or something so we can at least have some flow there of understanding those positions? Yes, sir. Okay.
And the job posting has that too, so the, so the job, the folks actually getting the job know that, how it's funded.
Okay, but if that's on the line item, that'll, yes, sir.
I want to make one other comment. I was in discussion with, with some people here recently and we were talking about how the state does mandate certain things that come down, like Kevin's required and Bruce required and detention centers required and make some, certain notifications when certain things happen in their system. And it made me think about the local government fund that we've been slighted year after year after year, that those funds can go help support some of these services. It's like getting an unfunded mandate that's sent down. And it, and we've had this discussion, I think we sent a resolution to Columbia saying, hey, we need you to fund our local government fund because you're requiring us to do certain things, but you're not funding us to do it, so we're having to pick up the slack. When tax time comes around, we have to evaluate our tax structure to make sure we have enough money in the budget. And it brings me to this point that we need, during this budget year, we need to make sure we're on top of what we're getting from the state and our local government fund because that money could be used to go to help support these type services that we've been slighted, I think the conversation was, the last six to eight years, we have been unfunded.
$11 million.
It's a huge number, that, that's money, that's real dollars to this county that we are missing out. And when we have a surplus of money in Columbia that's not being appropriated and they're not funding us to the level of the statute that's set by law. They've come in under so many years with this local government fund, they're breaking the law that they, the commitment they've made to each county to send us this money, but they're not doing it. And that's money that we're slighted, that we can have an additional, as Michael said, upwards of $11 million here in York County that goes to provide these services throughout. And we wouldn't have to be sitting here playing tug-of-war with some of our, with some of our funding sources. So let's just keep that in mind during this budget year, that we need to make sure we're communicating with Columbia, our local delegation to push, we need to fully fund our local government fund to get this money sent to York County and everywhere else across the state for that matter.
Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Get it? Yeah. But if you could, make sure that Beth understands we need to, for the future, see it as originated by a grant position so we can add that information to what we need. Next item, council to consider award of bid number 2332 regarding the purchase of MSA manufactured self-contained breathing apparatuses and spare carbon cylinders for use by the Leslie Fire Department to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Newton's Fire and Safety Equipment of Graham, North Carolina, for a total cost of $58,914.20.
Move to approve.
Second.
Get it? Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item. Council to consider award of bid number 2333 regarding the purchase of a 2016 half-ton four-by-four crew cab pickup truck for use by the sheriff's office to Love Chevrolet of Columbia for a total cost of $31,139.
Move to approve to the second low bidder, which is Love Chevrolet of Columbia.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item. Council to consider award of bid number 2335 regarding the purchase of a new armored rescue vehicle for use by the sheriff's office to the lowest apparent responsive and responsible bidder, Lenco Industries of Pittsfield, Mass. for a total cost of $251,605, subject to the reaching an agreement acceptable to the county attorney.
Move to approve, subject to that agreement. And also note that the sheriff has, has agreed to fund the shortfall in the budget amount in the low bid.
Second.
Discussion.
Did we not have a similar item before, within a year or so ago?
I remember something.
Six years.
Have we had a need to use one in the last six, seven years?
Multiple times.
Got you.
He didn't take it one time, Mr. Rock.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, sir, big brother.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I wonder where there was.
I was waiting on you. This meat not digging on.
Let's see here.
Move to approve, consented.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Committee reports, Finance and Operations Chairman, Michael Johnson.
In what clearly feels like three days ago at this point, the financial committee meeting, financial. Met earlier this afternoon. And we approved Amy Massey for the Economic Development Board as well as Barbara Omer for the York County, Keep York County Beautiful. That's all we took up today.
Thank you, sir. Next item, and I doubt anybody has anything to say, but I'll mention it.
Good strategy.
Council member new non-agenda comments, is there any?
I do.
Okay.
I do, and this is.
Always got to be one.
New in a sense that we just talked about it. I do want, and David, I wish, I wish Bill was here. I am going to ask, if the administration wants to deny a position solely on the grounds that a grant should cover it, similar to what Sheriff Bryant just said to us, I'm requesting the administration specifically put that in writing so that this council going ahead knows that the administration would have supported this but for the fact the best way to fund it is through a grant. Then my objection to this process won't be there because it would have been something we would have approved through the budget but for a grant process. So I, but without, the only person with that institutional knowledge tonight was the sheriff. And while I don't doubt the sheriff, I want it in writing from the administration so I can see it moving forward. The other thing is, and I'm going to ask Karen to play it, not right this second, Karen, when we, when we kind of adjourn, Karen's going to put on a video and the video was taken by a realtor in the Fort Mill area. And it's about four minutes long, that's why I'm not asking her to do it right this second and just let it play kind of during the break. But that, it is a drone that flies over the Regent, I'm going to excuse you, not the Regent Park, the Hubert Graham Parkway, from one end of construction through the other. It's, it's, for as far as I'm concerned, it could be on TV. I mean, it's fantastic. But it ought to be something that, in the department, in engineering, if you want to make people realize what Pennies is doing for them, you've actually got to show them in a way that they care about. And I think when you watch this video, it's on YouTube, but she'll show it, when you watch it, it's amazing when you really get to see all the construction that's going on, what that road's going to connect, how it's going to connect these two areas. It's well done and I just think it's, while yes, it may just purely be propaganda, occasionally you have to toot your own horn because certainly the slings and arrows at the Pennies program are numerous from everybody. Be nice to be able to point out some of the good things we're doing with it.
Okay. And I guess that, does that wrap it up for that item? There being no other comments, do we have a motion on executive session?
Move we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters, including the Assistant County Manager position, DNA analyst and DNA technical leader, paralegal supervisor, financial specialist, IT Systems Manager slash Engineer and IT Specialist slash Coordinator, and contractual matters, including the Riverview Fire Department, Davilaw Boulevard, I-77 corridor, and the Pennies for Progress Program.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams, could you add, received legal advice, council update on a special exception application?
Did I not say that loud enough? I think I said we receive legal advice on the update of a special zoning application.
Thank you.
Okay, and got a second discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, we're going to start back at 9:40. We just have come out of executive session with two action items. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that we give the county manager permission to execute an agreement with Green, Finney, and Horn related to the Pennies program relating to the budget changes.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Sure. And also move that we allow our sub-tenant on the White Street property, The Rock, to request a special exception application from the city of Rock Hill.
Second.
And authorize county staff to sign on behalf of the county.
And authorize county staff to sign on behalf of the county.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. If there's no further discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.